Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your blessings. This is a day that you've made and for that reason we have been in a silver setting to discuss the business of the people. We ask that your Holy Spirit will guide us, direct us in our discussions and in our deliberations today. Thank you for those who've come down and, Father God, we hope that they could find some satisfaction in whatever they seek here before the council today. It's a blessing we ask Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clark.
Ms. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Everson?
Here.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins?
Mr. Corbin?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Shine?
Present.
Mr. Sam Jenkins?
Present.
Okay, Dale?
Yes, sir.
Tomorrow at this time, I'll ask the council members, please, give me a motion for the administrative conference on Monday, August 26th, and the city council meeting on Tuesday, August 26th, August conference on the 5th. Dale, we're gonna, we're gonna go to you, let you fill in for the mayor. You have any awards, recognition of distinguished guests?
Well, none at this time, Mr. Chairman. I know the mayor should be in the chambers shortly, so if he has any, we'll get him at that time.
Okay, let's go to council members. At this time, any council members have any awards or recognition of special guests?
Mr. Chairman, I do see former District G Council Representative Roy Carey in the audience. Should I want to acknowledge his presence here today?
Is that Mr. Roy Carey? Thank you, Roy. Roy and I served together with the governor of the mayor over here, and I think they enjoyed working together.
Absolutely. In fact, I was, was in New York back during the summer, Mr. Shine.
And you saw Roy?
No, no. But they told me I need to go by and I should visit with a gentleman that they refer to as the white Roy Carey.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know what...
Don't leave.
Roy, you gotta have something to say. You gotta have something to say, but...
We're talking about Donald Trump.
I'm stunned. Well, no.
The white Roy Carey.
I'm stunned now. Roy, you see, I was stunned. I didn't know, I didn't know how to, you know, usually I have something to say. You do it. Mayor, you gotta, you gotta cut that out now. Dale, you see that, huh?
Yeah, he got you on that one, huh?
Yeah, he got me on that one. I didn't know what to say behind that. Yeah. Okay. Was it any, was it anybody else you wanted to recognize, Mr. Mayor?
Join you in...
Since you didn't recognize Roy already.
Join you in extending welcome to our former member of the city council of 24 years ago, Mr. Shine, that...
Wait, now, has it been that long?
Uh...
Roy.
Yes, sir.
By the time we go home, man, it hasn't been that long.
So, 24 years ago.
I need to go, I need to spend some time, some time with my family then. I got two boys who've grown up.
But I, I, I am impressed to see, now, I've had gray hair for some time, but that is the first time I've ever seen Roy with any, so...
Wait a minute, now, wait a minute, Mayor, now, wait a minute. Now, the Donald Trump thing, I can go along, but now, the gray hair thing, I think...
You can't believe.
I think it's...
I believe that's the burden of the ministry, Mr. Shine.
I think, oh, okay.
I believe that's the burden of the ministry.
Okay. Dale, I was about to say that he gonna try and pull my leg right here, 'cause you know Roy had no gray hair.
My natural wizardry has always been easy for him, Mr. Shine, but the burden of preaching the gospel, it's actually toll on the mayor.
What you said, what you said, the devil is always somewhere around, huh?
Absolutely.
You gotta fight that devil off. All right, then, man.
Mr. Shine, I believe we also have a former state senator, Lydia Jackson, who's here as a part of the three folks up for confirmation today.
Did Ms. Jackson ease in here and didn't let nobody see her? Oh, let me raise up. Ms. Jackson, I couldn't see where I ran over there. Usually, we have former elected officials sitting up front. I saw, because Roy eased in and told me he'd rather sit back there, but I didn't see Ms. Jackson. Was it, is it anybody else, Mayor?
Uh, Ms. Shine, council members, obviously, I have some additional comments to make on tomorrow, but want to take a moment to, to share from the administration's perspective our great sorrow at the passing of someone who was waiting.
Yeah.
Roy and I, 24 years ago, as we were running to become members of the city council, she was already in the mayor's office and became, I believe, and I'll stand to be corrected, the first female to be appointed the head of a department for the S.C.S. report. Lillian Priest passed away after her heroic battle with cancer just a few days ago and had her home-going celebration this past Saturday.
Saturday, right.
At the Catholic Baptist Church, and it was a wonderful, wonderful gathering. I know that Councilman Everson was there, Councilman Sam Jenkins, Councilman Oliver Jenkins and others, and just simply want to express to her family how much we honor and appreciate the great legacy that she's left behind.
Mr. Mayor, we're so grateful. Okay, Jeff?
We covered the one I, I had noticed Ms. Jackson slip in back there and was gonna acknowledge her as well, but...
Well, you can go ahead on. I mean, Lydia, you don't mind getting acknowledged by two people, do you?
By two handsome men. And speaking of, she did a beautiful job at Lillian's home-going ceremony, was very touching words, and really appreciate her offering herself for service to the city in the way that she has, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sam, Mike?
Add me to the list of people that recognized former state senator Lydia Jackson. I want these other guys to get something in that I don't have. That is my constituent from District G, so I want to make sure I recognize her presence here today also.
Well, you know you got one vote. Mayor, I saw, Roy, I want you to hear this too. I saw Sam out campaigning Sunday at his yard sign in one hand and a Bible in the other one. Dale, don't you think that's, that's pretty good, isn't it?
That is. It's a heck of a combination.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. But while we on, it's, where's Ms. Harris?
Stay in the middle.
Uh, Mr. Harris, I was kinda driving around a little bit over the weekend, 'cause I was noticing all of Sam's signs in yards, and Ms. Olly Tyler got a bunch of hoes out in the public right-of-way, and we wouldn't want somebody who's running to enforce the law to break the law. So, would you have some of your people to check on that, please, sir? All right, thank you. I know Sam had kinda, Dale, Sam had kinda whispered in my ear, and I didn't want him to see it. I'd rather come out and see it, though Sam didn't, Sam didn't do that.
I received my letter from Mr. Clark. I'm just gonna put it down. I'm gonna abide by what he has provided.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, Mr. Clark, right. You sitting right there. Ms. Tyler got a bunch of them out in the public, matter of fact, it's some over in my area, I didn't see, uh, public right-of-way. And you've done an excellent job all the time by making sure that candidates don't break the law. We appreciate that. Okay, any other council member with anything, or anybody you'd like to recognize? If not, Ms. Farnell. Where's Ms. Farnell?
She was just out.
I saw in the back conference.
Just stepped out. Ms. Scott's going to get her.
Mr. Sibley, do you have anything you want to contribute, or?
No, sir, except that we'll submit a formal report to you guys on tomorrow. I'm waiting to get the other revenue information, but I will simply say that sales tax numbers continue to positively surprise us, so we'll have a more detailed report on tomorrow.
Okay. Ms. Farnell, anybody with any questions for Ms. Farnell?
I do have a new one that has come up since before the meeting started that I'd like to share with you. It's on Hollywood and the 1900 block, and I will shoot you an email with the contact information, but just to let you know what it is. It's a concern about a structure there.
Okay.
Anybody else have any concerns for Ms. Farnell? She's a very, very compassionate person. I don't know, Roy, I don't know whether that comes from her religious background or whether it comes from her civics background.
Could be a little bit of both.
Yeah, could be a little bit of both. Thank you, Ms. Farnell.
Chairperson, so she'll be coming back, won't she? 'Cause I have a couple of people here and something, so...
Oh, she's not going anywhere.
For the appeals period.
Dale says she's on the payroll. I mean, on the time clock. Okay. Ms. Scott, did you have anything to contribute? Where's Ms. Scott? Didn't I see Ms. Scott?
She's over there.
Okay. Ms. Scott, again, now, did you get a chance to kinda research that little information? I had some calls.
Mr. Shine, she's sent an email, and we failed to get it to you.
Well, come on up, Ms. Scott. You can give it to me firsthand. They might, you know, by the time somebody get it, they might change it a little bit, but I know if it's coming directly from you, it's what it ought to be.
Yes, sir. We did send an email, as promised. The gist of the email was that we could find nothing in either state law or local law that prohibits the wearing of campaign paraphernalia during a public meet, or a meeting of public bodies such as a city council.
Well, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure.
All right.
Got some calls, and I really didn't know what the legality of it was, so I told them our city attorney was researching it, and whatever she found, that's what we will abide by.
The email also states that we did reach out to officials at the State Ethics Commission as well as the Attorney General's Office to find out if there was anything that they were aware of in state law that perhaps our research did not disclose, but neither of the attorneys for either agencies were aware of a prohibition in state law.
Scott, thank you so very much, and you've been an effective legal counsel, Mr. Mayor, for the last, what is it, seven and a half years, well, seven and three-fourths years coming up to eight, and, but I know you have, I know you understand that you have one of the two brightest legal minds that you can put your hands on, Mr. Arthur Thompson and Mr. Sam Jenkins. So, you both have been fortunate. Mr. Jean, is it?
I think Mr. Clark is filling in for Stephen today.
You're filling in for, okay, you have anything you want to contribute today?
It's our master plan update.
Yeah. Mr. Sibley, you have to keep me informed, because you all got so many wonderful people working for the administration.
Maybe one day I will graduate to that status, Mr. Chairman.
Hey!
In reference to master plan, we're in the final leg of the process. We are in the process of reviewing the first draft of the, final draft of the Unified Development Code to make comments in reference to codify that process and make the master plan into law. The ordinance actually makes it a legal document and an enforcement document that we can use, and we're going through that process in the next few weeks.
Thank you, sir. But just before you go, anybody got any questions?
Just, just as a matter of, and y'all received it, what, last week, maybe?
Last week.
And I know that it's a lot to look through and review, and y'all will probably be considering it for several weeks, but does it, in first glance, it appears to be in order of...
It appears to be quite an exciting document. As you well know, the existing ordinance was quite antiquated and out of date and did not always deal with best practices and carrot uses and so forth, and this makes an attempt to try to get the wide spectrum of different uses that are more applicable to modern times and so forth. So, it was quite exciting just the first glance we took.
Great. Happy to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
Ms. Shine?
Yes, ma'am.
I've been having, I spoke with a young man in the garage, trying to coming into the chamber, and of course, he indicated that he had been sending me out some emails of which I haven't been able to access.
Now, that young man wasn't Oliver Jenkins, was it?
No, as a matter of fact, it wasn't. He works in another department here in the Government Plaza. But, Mr. Clark, is there an ordinance on the agenda today in regards to the Unified Development Code? I heard you, 'cause I haven't had a chance to review it, and so I wanted to kinda look over it. You said, I mean, you've indicated that it's a much better, is it on the agenda today?
There's nothing on the agenda today. We've just gotten the information from Kameras, and we're in the process of reviewing it to go through the process of making our comments as to how we feel this is applicable to Shreveport and putting the spin, the Shreveport's being on what the consultants have done.
Okay, and so, Jeff, after they do their thing, then we'll turn it over to the public for review as well? I mean, in your presentation, you indicated that we would allow the public to have a review as well.
Yeah, I think that's still anticipated to be part of the process after this first draft has been reviewed by staff, and then they'll make comments, suggestions and edits, get it back to the consultants to incorporate those, and then once those are incorporated, then that will start off the process of public outreach.
Okay.
And there will be a series of public meetings in which the public will have an opportunity to provide input.
Okay. All right. I was just wondering if something was here today, because I hadn't had an opportunity to review the agenda. So, thank you.
Shelley, after council meeting, I need to see you for one minute here. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Thompson, there's no public hearing, right?
That's correct, Mr. Shine.
Will we have any legislation to add to the agenda?
We don't have any so far.
Okay. Mr. Sibley, will you have any for tomorrow?
Uh, none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Public comments, we only have two, so, or three, and let's get rid of those right here. One is, Rose, I believe it was the one that I sent to you. You've added over there.
Well, actually, Ms. Farnell indicated that they would come up with her property standards.
Okay, let me, let me, let me, let me tell them, so...
Yeah, because I had directed him to give his, his, his sign-in sheet to D, but then Farnell said it wouldn't be necessary, because they would be coming up with her.
Okay, Ms. Farnell, where's Ms. Farnell? I just, I, I...
She's not in here.
Okay. Farnell was busy today.
Thank you.
This is good.
But I mean, I don't have a problem with them coming up, Councilman. Oh, there she is.
Uh, we got Mr. Doug Donit that signed to come up to speak, and I don't want to overlook anybody if they still want to come up and speak, because I think they told me that they, that's why you signed. Back in the back, about York Street.
Uh, Mr. Thompson, this is a...
Okay, did they take care of you?
What?
Okay, that's okay. He said you took care of them. So, if you took care of them, I'm fine with it. I just didn't want to go by them, and then he said, "Well, look, I signed a slip to come and speak," and y'all did.
Please, please.
Okay, well, that's fine. I just, I didn't know. I just, I just wanted to know. Okay. And, Rowan Francis, is, did you want to come up and... I'm sorry, is his case up?
Yes, sir.
You want, why don't you wait until the, I'm sorry, why don't you wait? I got to, why don't you wait until Ms., Ms. Dart could come up, and then you can come up with her? If you want to, you can just sit right there, 'cause it won't be long before she'll be, she'll be coming up. Okay. And it's Kevin Jacobs? That's the same thing, they'll be coming up with you? Okay, I just wanted to know. Confirmations, Mr. Sibley for tomorrow?
We have four, Mr. Shine.
Okay, you, okay, you want to just wait until tomorrow before you say anything?
What we do, we do have Ms. Jackson in chambers today.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say.
The others will be in chambers tomorrow.
Okay.
If you'd like to go ahead and bring her up, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, you want Ms. Jackson to come up and see if anybody have any questions?
Get back up the hard work.
Ms. Jackson, if you don't mind, Mr. Thompson might have a few questions for you. I was, I was, I was told that you might not have had a big enough present, gift with you when you went to a certain lady's birthday party, and I wonder whether he want to kinda drill you a little bit on that.
Thank you, Councilman Shine, and I certainly didn't study enough to answer Mr. Thompson's question.
Hey, darling, you did. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Jackson? Ms. Jackson is well-known. Mom and dad were educators, and, and, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna tell you this, and I know you didn't know, 'cause you know, you know so many things. My sister and her mother stayed together for a few years over in Mendon, and working at Webster High School, and they had a student who gave them a lot of problems, and I'm told it's a student that you might know.
And, Mr. Shine, I might be able to tell you something that you didn't know about that relationship.
Okay.
Perhaps before I knew it, your sister knew that I had a career in banking, and I think she started the first Lydia Jackson banking account, and I remember that those, there are deposit slips that I still have, and the initial deposits were some gun drops, and the purple ones were my favorites.
Ah, Ms. Jackson, you are exactly right. Now, that's, that's one thing that I did know, all right, and I'm supposed to be on top of everything, but, Ms. Jackson, I appreciate it, and when I talk to her, I'll remind her to let her know that you still remember that.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Send a file to your confirmation on tomorrow.
Thank you, my councilman.
And before she leaves, Councilman, Chairperson, I just wanted to express my gratitude to you on behalf of District A, of the Paint Your Heart Out crew that came out into the community and helped with the painting and, you know, the different renovations, so they're highly appreciative of the service that you provided. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. We look forward to continuing working in District A and throughout the city and community development activities.
All right.
Ms. Jackson, thank you so very much, and, and, Mr. Mayor, she might be busy tomorrow, so why don't we just let this be today, and we won't have any problems from it on tomorrow.
Very good, Mr. Shine. Thank you so much. We certainly appreciate the council's consideration and Ms. Jackson's willingness to serve.
That's true.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, so very much.
Thank you, Chairman Shine.
Okay.
Consent agenda legislation.
We're gonna be ready to start with the consent agenda.
There are no items under Section 8 consent agenda legislation going under Section 9 regular agenda legislation, sub-8 resolutions on second reading and final passage, or which will require only one reading. Number 160 declares the intention of the City of Shreveport to proceed with the issuance of not to exceed $75 million street improvement bonds in one or more series for the purpose of financing the cost of constructing, paving, and improving public streets in the city, including utilities relocation and incidental sewer and drainage work required thereby. Make an application to the Louisiana State Bond Commission for approval of such bonds and otherwise provided with respect thereto. This matter was previously postponed.
I see we have, I see y'all have a couple of guests here, and would you, anybody have any questions for, did you want them to come up, Mr. Sibley?
The council's pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Yeah, I'd love to.
I think those comments will be more applicable to some of the other items a little further down on the agenda, but, Mr. Shine, this is an issue that was postponed just based on the fact that we have put this out as an approach to give us a chance to be able to do something with, with our street situation. We look to be able to have some additional conversations with council members between today and tomorrow. We think the staff comments will be more appropriate to the items a little further down on the agenda.
You know, it's fine with me, but I do serve the pleasure of the council, and I will always make sure that I please my council members. If, if I was elected by the mayor, I'd say, "Well, hey, Mayor, you're all right, but I'm elected chairman by..." And, Mayor, you know, you always say this is a council meeting.
Absolutely.
A mayor's meeting.
Absolutely.
If, if none of the council members have anything that they would like to ask at this time, we'll wait.
And, Mr. Chairman, let me know for the record. I just received a note from the city attorney that there will be an amendment on this matter for tomorrow to clarify some language, but that's in addition to the conversation that the mayor indicated that need to be held.
Got to be fine. Just make sure you get it to the collective council over there, because...
We will do that.
Anytime you overlook him, you might have a wrong problem.
Chairman, do you know whether or not it is anticipated that this one will be adopted tomorrow?
Uh, I hadn't had a chance to talk with my, my, my financial advisor, Mr. Jenkins and Oliver, so...
It's so hard to figure out who we're, and what our subject matter expertise is these days.
Did you?
But we'd be happy to discuss it. I mean, I'm sure we have some thoughts, but fairness to the mayor, it probably intends or wants to have some dialogue with us, and whether that happens before tomorrow or not, I don't know, but I'm certainly in no big rush to get this done by tomorrow if that time doesn't permit us to have those. I'll say that, acting as the anointed financial advisor of the seven of us.
Yeah.
Not self-proclaimed. Let me make sure that that's very clear. There was a...
Mayor, you think you might have time if, Dale, if I had a little money, I'd, you know, I'd make the paper dinner between the two of them and at the, at the Shreveport Country Club and let them sit down and have a dialogue, but since I don't have any, I don't have any money and the credit card is maxed out, and I don't know what I can do. But if you all can, good, if not, I guess we'll have to look at postponing it.
Proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Resolution 161 ratifies the execution of the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement with the perish of cattle relative to the receipt of funds to purchase and install smoke alarms.
Okay, any questions? If not, please proceed. Yeah, hold it.
Ordinance 82, what, what is the, what's the relationship between 161 and 82?
I assume one had to do with our budget and the other had to do with the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement.
Right. One's to sign the agreement, the other's to actual money.
Are we clear on that? Okay.
I mean, I say that, that's what I assume, but I'd have to get it closely.
Resolution 163 accepts dedication for Bernstein Avenue and Paradise Church subdivision.
Jeff?
It's a good thing. We are just taking back in some part of the street that's in that area, and it's, was led by engineering. Robert, did you want to say any words about it? Or, I mean, I think it's fairly self-explanatory, but if anybody has any questions, Robert is here and could answer them. But if anybody has any questions, Robert is here and could answer them.
Well, I mean... Taking on more roads may be not mine, but kind of our overall strategy. But I'm sure there's a real reason for it. And I'm sure it's not a significant part of...
Let's get him to put something on the record.
I mean...
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman. This... Excuse me, I'm terribly sorry. This ordinance is a resolution is for dedicating a small corner parcel off of the northwest corner of Bernstein and Hollywood. It will facilitate the placement of our stop signs that are currently on private property. They will now be on the public right of way.
Oh, are we... I mean, is it just that little tiny corner?
Yes, a little corner, yes, sir.
So, when it said roads...
Yeah, it's not like you're taking this whole street. It's like a... It's a little plot of land.
Thanks, Robert.
We'll take that up. District B's bond, uh, maintaining, we'll set up a full project on that.
Resolution 164 declares the city's interest in certain adjudicated property at surplus. This is regarding Districts A, B, D, F, and G.
Any questions? If not, please.
Resolution 165 suspends certain provisions of Chapter 106 and Chapter 10 relative to dispensing, sale, and/or consumption of alcoholic beverages at Shreve City Shopping Center, 1200 Shreveport-Barsdale Highway, for the Susan G. Coleman Race for the Cure event.
Any questions? If not, please.
Resolution 167 authorizes the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, to proceed with the issuance of not exceeding $76,700,000 water and sewer revenue refunding bonds and one or more series for the purpose of refunding certain existing indebtedness of the city. Make an application to the Louisiana State Bond Commission for approval of such bonds and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Mr. Chairman? 166, what's next?
I was wondering if he...
That number should be 166?
Yeah.
You skipped over it.
You skipped over 166.
Here, let me refresh. I'm sorry.
166.
Yeah.
It's not on E, but I have it on the hard copy. 166 authorizes the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana to proceed with the issuance of not exceeding $35 million general obligation refunding bonds and one or more series for the purpose of refunding certain existing indebtedness of the city. Make an application to the Louisiana State Bond Commission for approval of such bonds and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Do we have any comments or questions?
Just for tomorrow... I mean, I globally know what it's about, but the links don't seem to be working on this one, too. Or at least, they're not on mine.
Dale?
Uh, refresh.
Mine seems to be working.
Yeah, I had to refresh to get mine up.
They're working for you. Yep, they're working now. These are refunding and reissuance, right?
Yes, sir.
No question, further questions?
Okay, anybody else? If not?
On these refunding bonds, the term will not exceed the existing terms. Is that correct? And, um... Will the final document, uh, state that the savings shall be at least X... At least a certain amount?
This is just a resolution, though, right?
Exactly. I'm not sure we have the details yet. But Dale, please come forward and enter that into the record.
Bill Bowles, Bowles Law Firm. Uh, as you're... You asked, Arthur, the, um... The term will not exceed, uh, the, um... The term, uh, the original term. And then, as far as the savings, we're going to the Bond Commission on this. Uh... These are... These particular bonds are, um... The... We're contemplating a forward delivery of the bond because technically, we're not within the 90 days, which would make it a current refunding. If we make it a current refunding, uh... The Bond Commission allows you to have any savings on the bond. So, there's, as far as a certain amount of savings. We're not required by law, but there's some substantial savings. And I might want to let financial advisors speak to the savings. You can put a minimum in there if we want when we get to the bond ordinance. This is just to go to the Bond Commission.
That's what I mean, the bond ordinance.
Yes, sir. And if you want, we can put the, uh... If that's the pleasure of the council, we can put in a minimum amount of savings. But there's significant savings in doing that. By law, if it's a current refunding, which means within 90 days of the call date, it could be any savings. But, of course, you don't want to do a deal that just generates a little bit of savings and fees for the professionals. You want to have significant savings even do that. And these do that.
And, Mr. Chairman, while Genesis comes forward, Ms. Fields just reminded me that in the past, the council has established minimums on the savings that goes into the ordinance. So, that can be done again, as Mr. Bowles indicated.
And that's what I was going to say. That'll go in once we've, um, reached the ordinance stage.
Thanks, Genesis. Thanks, Bill.
All right.
And for these... And this is more of a, maybe, a finance question. But we have enough in our debt service fund, obviously, to cover this refunding?
This actually generates savings to you so that there is a reduction in what you're paying for debt service.
Oh, so we're not...
You're not taking on new... You're taking on lower interest rate debt and, um, moving out of more expenses. So, your debt service will actually come down as a result of... That's how your savings are generated.
Yeah.
Strict refunding, no new...
Strict refunding, no new money in this piece.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all very much.
That was, uh, Resolution 166 and Resolution 167.
That's correct.
Number 168 authorizes... Authorizes the employment of special legal counsel to provide legal advice, counsel and representation to the City of Shreveport. This is regarding Mr. Tim Hardy.
Yes, the mayor. Yes, okay. Okay.
I was just going to ask if this was in connection to EPA or if this is...
About to want... In fact, Terry wants you to come up and join to help me fill in the, uh... The legal specifics. Mr. Chairman, council members, this is in relation to the, uh... The Harrelson landfill situation? We have, uh... As you all are aware, have been dealing with this for more than a couple of decades now. And, uh, the situation is intensified in terms of the conditions at the landfill this summer. The state fire marshal finally came in, uh, to their credit and designated it as an emergency. Believe that forced the state DEQ's hand to follow suit. There was a, um... Fire mitigation enclosure plan that was submitted, uh, on the 7th of, uh... Of August. That, um... We had Scott Wolverton with the Shreveport Fire Department and other members of the department to give some rigorous review and evaluation of. We made suggestions to, uh, the DEQ and the state regarding what we thought were appropriate changes and adjustments to be made in that situation. Unfortunately, um... Practically none of them were, um, followed. Uh, and so what we ended up with is a fire mitigation enclosure plan that actually does not constitute a fire mitigation enclosure plan. In fact, it ends up essentially, um, being an open-ended permit and essentially puts the Harrelson folks in a better posture than they were prior to their decision to not seek renewal of their permit. The state, um, affords a... An opportunity for, uh, a plan of this nature to be appealed. That appeal has to be done, as I understand it. And Terry, correct me if I'm wrong. That appeal is done to the 19th District, uh, JDC. And it has to be done, uh, within, I believe, 30 days of the issuance of the... Of the plan. And so, in an effort to put us in a position to be able to effectively address this situation and to do so in a timely manner, we reached out for assistance to the same legal counsel that assisted us with the, uh, situation with our sanitary sewer system and our negotiations with the Department of Justice and EPA, Mr. Tim Hardy, a Shreveport native and also one, uh, who is a former assistant director, deputy director of the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality. So, someone who is extremely, uh, familiar with this situation and also being a native of Lakeside, grew up in the shadow of what is now referred to by many as Harrelson Hill or Mount Harrelson. And so, uh, we have, uh, a two-pronged approach to try and effectively, uh, achieve some relief in this situation. One is to appeal, uh, the, um, fire mitigation enclosure plan of the, uh... That's been submitted by the DEQ as well as, uh, requesting intervention from the Federal Department of Environmental Protection or the Environmental Protection Agents. They will be in town on Thursday for a meeting regarding this situation. The bottom line of this is that if you were to look at and break down and review, uh, the fire mitigation enclosure plan as it has been submitted by the folks at Harrelson and approved by, uh, the DEQ, it equates into, uh, essentially, Mr. Harrelson and three of his employees being given the, uh... The opportunity to go into a 10, three days' worth of, uh, fire training over, uh, at Camp Mendon. At some form of, uh, what they call incipient, uh, fire training for three days. And so, with three days' worth of training, Mr. Harrelson and his folks are to come back and put out a fire that has been burning, uh, by at least official accounts from the DEQ since 2008, by some reports from people within the community and former employees of the landfill since 2000. At the same time that they are being allowed, with three days' worth of training, to put out the fire, the DEQ will allow the landfill permit, uh, to stay in effect. So, essentially, the operation continues to be open. They continue to collect, uh, construction and demolition debris, while at the same time attempting to put out the fire. And in fact, the closure, uh, of the landfill does not commence until the fire itself is deemed to be out. We pointed these issues out to the DEQ. The Fire Department did as well. We also believe that internally, it was done by the state fire marshal. None of those things were acknowledged until it became known that we'd made contact with the Environmental Protection Agency on last week and that they were, in fact, coming, uh, to town, uh, to engage on this issue this coming Thursday. It was at that point that the, uh, state DEQ Secretary Peggy Hatch issued, uh, an addendum that now requires the folks at Harrelson to be able to establish within 10 days that they actually have the capacity to carry out, uh, a plan that really didn't constitute much of a plan from the first place. But, uh, the purpose here is to be able to be in a position to appeal the fire mitigation enclosure plan, to do so within the prescribed timeframe and in the proper venue, which is the 19th District, uh, JDC. And we believe that Mr. Hardy would be the person best suited to represent the city in doing so.
Okay, uh... Chairman? Let me ask a question. Okay. The city as an entity has some proper standing to make this appeal?
I'm guessing the city's going to sue DEQ, right? I mean, essentially.
I'm just trying to see, basically...
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. What we're doing, as the mayor said, is that we are, um, appealing the order that DEQ issued. And any citizen can do that. The City of Shreveport, for purposes of the regulations, has the right to bring that appeal. In addition to what the mayor says, this will also... By having Mr. Hardy on board, this will also give us the opportunity to pursue this matter on a dual track. As you all know, we are currently engaged in litigation with Harrelson in regard to the fires that are occurring on site as well as some longstanding zoning issues. Engaging this firm will allow us to continue to pursue whatever... What regulatory and administrative options we have while at the same time allowing Mr. Irwin and his staff to continue to pursue the litigation.
And... Is the end result, you know, with the appeal? I guess I'm trying to find what happens there. Say, if this is... We prevail at the appeal. What does that mean?
What we're trying to do is... And Mayor, don't let me cut you off. But what we want to make sure is that we don't, um... Impede the closure order. What we want to make sure, though, is that that order is specific enough and has enough detail in it that it is, in fact, a meaningful closure order. So, that's the purpose of the appeal. We're asking, uh, DEQ to expand what they have included in that closure order to make it something that is actually real, that has measures in it that can be accomplished, and that requires that those measures be employed by someone who has the capacity to do them. A professional, a third-party professional, someone rather than Harrelson because Harrelson and his employ... His three employees don't have the capacity to put out that fire.
Mr. Dickens, council members, that putting out a subterranean landfill fire is a very difficult task.
Very, very difficult.
Extremely difficult. And it is something that should be done by folks who have the experience and ability and capacity to be able to do that.
And the equipment. I wouldn't think that...
And the equipment and all of the processes and what had it. The reason as to why the State Department of Environmental Quality would not require Mr. Harrelson to, in fact, make use of someone, uh, with that type of skill, experience, and expertise is a mystery. What this affords them is the chance to be able to essentially... You're going to put out the fire. And at the same time you put out the fire, you're going to continue to operate your construction and demolition debris landfill. And you're going to continue to operate two additional things there that are... Have been now cited by the City's zoning office, a rock crushing operation and an agricultural waste operation, neither of which, uh, the planning office was aware of, the zoning office was aware of. And neither of which should be allowed by the State of Louisiana, the Department of Environmental Quality or the Louisiana Department of Agriculture. All of these are the types of activities that have been allowed and facilitated by the leadership of the State Department of Environmental Quality. And, you know, at this point, it is something that we believe should no longer be imposed upon the citizens who live closest to it nor the rest of us who live around, uh, the City of Shreveport and Cattle Parish.
And would you be willing to say that something smells bad about that?
It... Something does smell extremely bad about it, Mr. Shaun. I mean, it... Again, the idea that you would allow four folks who have no experience...
Right.
None.
Right.
I mean, absolutely zero prior to going to their three days' worth of training at a fire academy that was held over at Camp Mendon. And that took place in the last two weeks. Those four folks will be the ones responsible for coming in and executing a fire mitigation plan that, in fact, also... And if you go online and look for best practices when it comes to putting out subterranean landfill fires, they tell you the best thing to do is to put them out in place so you don't end up further disturbing the materials. The strike... The plan, the strategy that DEQ has approved and proposes entails, actually, these folks going in and scooping up the materials, moving them to another area, dousing them with water, stirring them, letting them sit for 24 hours, coming to check to see if they're still on fire. If they are, they move them to another area, dousing some more. Then when it's finally out, they pick it up and then they move it back into the landfill. You know, I don't know how many of you all spent, uh, time cooking outdoors or around campfires or barbecuing or what have you. You know that if you want to stir up your coals, you take a stick and you're poking into them and you have the smoke and the fire and the soot and all that stuff ends up coming up. You know, those types of things being done by folks who have three days' worth of experience adjacent to a residential neighborhood, to me, just simply does not sound like anything that would be wise or would be prudent. I mean, I...
And basically, no equipment, you know?
With basically no equipment.
You know, putting out fires like that. I mean, it takes thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of equipment. Because if you don't have the right equipment, you can't do it.
That's correct.
You know, that's just as simple as it is. That's just like you trying to put out an oilfield fire. If you don't have the right equipment, you can't do it.
Well, Mr. Shaun, that's right in line with one of the examples that was offered and part of the information that we provided back to the state in response to what they proposed. And it was an example that was given by, uh, Chief Wolverton. And he said it would be like, uh, you having a chemical spill on one of your transport vehicles, which, right now, requires that if that happens, that you call in a professional third party to come in and clean that up.
That's right.
He said that would be tantamount to that transporter being able to say to the state DEQ, "Hey, guys, me and my fellows, we're going to go take a training course DEQ, hey guys, me and my fellows, we're going to go take a training course...
That's right.
...on chemical cleanup.
And we're going to do it.
And we're going to do it. And while we're doing it, I got to go send the truck on a few more runs so I can keep making some money. It just simply, it doesn't look good, it doesn't make sense, and Ms. Shine, quite frankly, it doesn't smell right.
That's right.
Both literally and figuratively.
Right.
Well, this engagement, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No, no.
So, will this engagement, I certainly think you got the right person for the job. Will this engagement, am I just going to deal with the appeal, but I heard something about the other litigation? Will Mr. Hardy be able to assist in any way with that?
Other than sharing of information, there is going to be an overlap in some of the information that has already been disclosed and provided, but Mr. Neil Irwin's firm is representing us in the litigation that is actually ongoing down with this file. Right now, Mr. Hardy's purview is regulatory and administrative appeals and oversight. Now, in the event some of those actions would result in litigation, then it would be our hope that he would continue to represent us in those matters as well.
Ms. Shine?
Yes.
In a nutshell, first of all, what I want to share with the council is the fact that, and I think I've shared this at some of the meetings, the landfill, which is six stories high, I've actually been in the area with the TV media, with the rally. I mean, the landfill is now very, 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 very toxic. I mean, it actually smells. And I've shared over and over again, our elderly people are getting sicker and sicker. And I want to share, Mayor Glover, with your administration as well as this council, I was talking to my mom on the phone yesterday, and of course, you know, Mom is, she's about to turn 80 years old next month, in November. And as I was talking to her, she said, well, I called the city today. I said, what? And I said, what number did you call? She said, I called the city. And I said, Mom, why did you call the city? Who did you talk to? She said, I talked to a lady, and I told the lady that I'm sick. She said, I woke up this morning, my nose was stopped up, I couldn't breathe. I mean, and she just gave me all these ailments. And so here I am, the city council rep of District A, and I said, Mom, did you tell them who you were? She said, yeah. She said, I told them I was Annie Pearl Galison Wilson. And she said, I have a right, don't I? And I said, well, of course you do, Mom. I said, but I wish you would have spoken to me, you know, prior to making your phone call. My point is this, and it boils down to the fact that the city, for the past six months or so, fingers are being pointed at the city, representative as well as the mayor, that there's more that the city can do about this. It was even shared by Senator Tarver, this was not only the state's problem, this was a city problem. And really what's happening now is we've made the efforts to follow protocol. We've come in and we've done our citing of violations. I mean, we've gone through that same old cycle. And, you know, our efforts have been to follow protocol, and that is to consult now with our state representatives as well as our governor, with no response from the governor and nor our state representative at this time. Of course, Senator Tarver, with my initiation, held a meeting, and we've had three meetings since then, addressing the landfill, and based on what the mayor has shared with you, it's the same old cycle. My point is this, the record needs to reflect, and the citizens especially of District A who's affected the most by this landfill, they need to know and be reassured that the city has reached out to try to address this issue on every level. At the most reading meeting, Councilman Shine, and you attended that meeting for a few minutes. Of course, you weren't there throughout the duration of the meeting, but where we are now is that, and it was addressed, you know, the citizens feel that the city could do more, you know, and we are doing more. And in doing more, we're running into the same old cycle. So in going to the state, and the state is not willing to listen to the cries of the people, now we're at the point where we're having to go to the federal level. So it's not like we're trying to undercut or undermine somebody. This is just where we are. And I want to thank the mayor as well as his administration, Attorney Scott, and this council for supporting us in this effort. And if this council feels that at any point in time that there's more that we can do to help alleviate this problem, as a representative of District A, I'm open and willing to listen to some of your suggestions. But right now, where we are, we don't have any other alternative due to the health and safety of the citizens living, I'd have to say, in and around this landfill. I mean, I just recall often, even in flying, even in taking trips when I was a smaller girl, seeing houses up in the mountains, seeing big, pretty, snow-covered mountains, well, when you go over in the MLK community and you step out in front of the, some of the front yards and the backyards of these citizens, they're not looking at snow-covered mountains, they're actually looking at a six-story landfill that's very toxic. Around the doorways, the vents are covered with duct tape. And again, this situation is getting worse. It's not getting any better. So as I mentioned at the very last, one of the meetings that Senator Tarver hosted, you know, where we are right now is, the question is, what's more important? And of course, living in this era of time, money and power is what's important. But what's important is it the lives of citizens or multi-millions and billions of dollars? And it's just as simple as that. But I just wanted to share that with the council, that as a representative, I'm reaching out, this council is reaching out, and I appreciate everything that this council does and will be doing to assist with this issue because, as I said, it is a health and safety issue like never before in the city. And at the same time, the water supply, I truly believe is being affected by this as well. And I've been advised that we don't want anybody from, at the state level, to come in and do our testing, because at the end of the day, their tests are going to read what they want their tests to read. We've been advised to get an outside entity to come in and do any further testing, any water sampling testing. So just, for the record, I want the citizens of District A to know that this is our final step. You know, the city has done what they could do, the state is not listening, and so we have no other alternative but to take it to the next level, and that is to the feds. Thank you, Councilman Shine.
Okay, Mr. Jenkins, can we move on from here? Make Sam?
Yes.
Okay. Terry, thank you here.
I just want to know who we were suing this weekend. It's a pretty straightforward question, right? We got in a lot of other stuff. That was a question.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say. We got about...
Unfortunately, the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality...
I mean, I got that once I wound down to that deal.
Which I guess equates into the state of Louisiana.
Yeah. Sad to hear it, but by the way, the governor's been sued recently himself, so he's pretty used to it by now.
And he's been suing.
He's been sending it back, that's a fact.
Okay, Dale.
Resolution 169, amends resolution number 91 of 2012 to authorize the expenditure of citywide improvement program 11C 003 funds to include the design work for the 1700 block of Nicholson Street.
This is, this is an ordinance that would, if you'll remember a few weeks ago, in the design of Oakdale Street, the project budget allowed for an expansion of that project, there was still some overage, and so in an effort to keep that funding in the neighborhood where it would have the same impact, we're creating this project to begin design work on a street where there is going to be some expansion in the coming years. And so this is to move money from that project that is not necessary for the completion of that project into a new project that would design improvements on the 1700 block of Nicholson Street.
Okay, Dale.
Section B is introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to September 23rd, 2014. Resolution 170 authorizes the mayor to execute a second amendment to the landfill gas lease agreement with Renovar Energy Corporation and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Okay, let's move on to 171.
Resolution 171 declares certain city property to be surplus property, authorizing the donation of the property to the Shreveport Police Department, Shreveport Police Downtown Unit Mounted and Bicycle Support Group, and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Introductions of ordinances?
These are ordinances not to be adopted prior to September 23rd, 2014. Ordinance 93, amends the 2014 general fund budget. This is property standards, doing some internal movements to provide more dollars to do some of their core functions. And ordinance 94, amends the 2014 general fund budget. This is a budget ordinance proposed by the CEO's office to, based upon some budget reductions in the 2014 budget in order to better provide for the 2015 budget year. These cuts are such that they will not affect the remaining activities of these departments for 2014.
Okay.
Section D?
Yes.
Mayor, are you running some kind of Republican administration over there? I mean, what we got going on over there? I need to start to get concerned.
I've been trying to help you guys understand.
I'm going to take, I'm going to spend a little time on this one, just to...
We take our fiscal responsibility very seriously here within the Glover administration.
I appreciate that.
Just takes about seven and a half years to get that message to some folks.
You see where he's, I mean, he's suggesting he's... I'm going to turn that on you, Dale. That's hard.
Section D, ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance 82, amends the 2014 grants special revenue fund budget. This is regarding the smoke alarm program with Shreveport Fire.
Okay, move on.
Ordinance 83, creates and establishes parking restrictions anytime on both sides of the 2600 block of DuPont Street.
Move on, please.
Ordinance 84, provides for the incurring of debt and issuance and sale of not exceeding $93,500,000 of general obligation bonds, series 2014 of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, prescribing the form, terms, and conditions of said bonds, designating the date, denomination, and place of payment of said bonds, providing for the payment thereof in principal and interest, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Any questions? 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 All right, let's move on.
Ordinance 85, authorizes the Shreveport Airport Authority to dispose of two aircraft, rescue, and firefighting vehicles as surplus property.
Any questions? Let's move on.
Ordinance 86, amends certain sections of chapter 66 of the code of ordinances relative to the employee's retirement system.
Any questions?
I understand we have agreements from all of the parties to this particular plan. I know we heard from, was it a representative of the current employees that was on the board?
Mr. Cooper, last week? Yes, sir. What you have before you is the culmination of a lot of feedback, back and forth, meetings with employees, meetings of the boards, information from the actuaries, and we feel that it is a good proposal that does what the board was tasked to do, which is provide for the long-term security of the plan.
I haven't received anything by way of any kind of objections from anybody, so I'm assuming everybody's okay with it.
Well, they may be holding their nose. You know, obviously, the employees are concerned with the changes, but we think they understand based upon the communication and the information. I think that's why you see that they say, okay, if this is what we have to do, then this is what we have to do.
Okay. Let's move on.
The council members will obviously offer some additional comments on tomorrow, but I just want to take the opportunity to stop and commend Dale and the rest of the staff and all the folks on the board for yeoman's work. And also specifically, the council representative to the board, Councilman Oliver Jenkins, was fully engaged in this for the weeks and months that it took to get us to this point. You know, and it's interesting, if there's ever a time that we should have a room full of cameras and reporters with notebooks out and what have you, it should be on the precipice of hopefully moving forward with this legislation. Because when you talk about the issues that are of real, real importance to the future health and viability of the city of Shreveport, this is one. Because if you look around the country and you talk about folks who say, well, are we the next Detroit, or are we the next Vallejo, or are we the next of any of the other cities around the country that have actually had to file bankruptcy or found themselves in fiscal exigency or other financially challenging situations and circumstances, it's because in many instances, they did not have a group of elected leaders and more importantly, employees who were willing to look this issue dead in the eye, realize that as much as we might want to, as much as we might like to, we cannot continue with the status quo. And so if we want to end up being able to have something that will still be significant and that can still keep us in a stable, viable position, then we've got to come up with the compromise. And as Dale mentioned, the folks who came last week, Mr. Cooper and Tom Dark and others have done an outstanding amount of work. The public meetings that we held with the employees, where we had a chance to be able to hear from them, and for folks who don't believe that having an open, unfiltered dialogue can result in some positive movement in terms of a situation, a clear example, two days' worth of affording the employees to come and hear about what was the actual set of circumstances that the city is facing, and then actually having a real, open ear to hear and listen to what it is that they had to say, gave us a chance to be able to ultimately end up with a process and an outcome that while nobody is completely happy with, it does represent some substantial resolution of this situation and circumstance. So hopefully, we'll be able to count at least a fore on tomorrow and see this go forward, and this will mark yet another significant set of circumstances that this city has chosen to not kick down the road, but rather to take on, to wrestle with, to grapple, and ultimately resolve.
I know Sam is interested in this because there are a few more mayoral debates, and you know, this has come up and won, and probably going to come up in some more, so...
And we want accurate information, even in those venues, you know, to be brought forth to the public, because unfortunately, sometime when we are campaigning, we say what's best for our position, as opposed to an issue like this for me, be a candidate for mayor or a member of the council, it's one of these issues that you want to, as best you can, you want to get it right. And that's why I said, my understanding, and I know everybody's not going to be, you know, totally pleased with what's going on, but my understanding overall is that there's some agreements to this from those persons who make up the employee retirement board, and I've not heard, you know, any forceful objections. In fact, I've heard the opposite, so, you know, I look forward to seeing it move forward on tomorrow, unless, you know, something happened between now and then, so... That's pretty much where I'm at, you know?
And Dale, I know you and the mayor can't control us, but I, you know, I think it would be nice if those who are running to head up the next administration would come in and sit down and get some factual information, because some of these debates, you know how it is, you know, you get all kind of information from folks who think they know everything and don't know deadly. You know, to me, it would be nice if they would give you a call, come in and take a look at this, because like they say, this is a very, very important situation that not only those candidates, but they, you know, they, you know, it's kind of bad when you give them that information and you really don't know what they're talking about, and you have people out there who don't know no better. And they swallow this kind of information. And to me, it would just be nice, but I know you can't make them, you know. The only thing you do is have it on your door and let them come in and get some information on this situation, because whoever the next mayor be is, you know, is going to have to be thinking about this, because money's going to have to come out of the general budget. That, and it's going to impact what they can do with some city services. You know, if you don't have a dollar, because, may I think they think, because you're a big man, you can just print some money, you know? man, you can just print some money, you know. I'd hate to see you do that because I'm too old to come and visit you somewhere.
Me too. Mr. Scheindler, we do have lots of written materials available. There will be another board meeting this Thursday that if anyone's interested can come and get information, but we do have written materials available, all the information that's been handed out and discussed, and anybody can get a copy of that, and it pretty much outlines the status of where things are and what the proposals are and the impact of them.
That's, I mean, that's, that's.
What time is that Thursday?
Charles.
Two thirty.
Two thirty, two thirty. Thursday afternoon in the conference room on the second floor.
Because we got a, we got a couple of candidates who's running for mayor now, listening in, you know, they must have been Rhodes Scholars because, you know, they, they are just so definite in what they know, you know, and I just have to kinda look at them and laugh and say, Lord, y'all just don't, you don't have no idea what you're talking about. I'm sorry, let's, let's move on, Dale.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we go, I'll do the same tomorrow, but I don't want to be remiss. In addition to Councilman Oliver Jenkins, who represents the council on the retirement board, I mentioned Dale in his capacity along with Sharik and the rest, and Charles Madden from finance, and Tom Dark, who's one of the retiree representatives, Greg Cooper, who is, I believe, in Public Works.
Water and Sewer.
Water and Sewer, Water and Sewer, is one of the employee representatives, and he's done yeoman's work, but then also Marilyn Smith. Marilyn Smith has done, oh, what?
Greg's in Public Works.
Greg's in Public Works.
I'm sorry.
The streets and drain is.
Stan don't came with me.
Streets and drain, yeah, yeah, yeah. Stan, don't let him take your good employees, yeah.
But I can't say enough about the work and the time that they put in, and it's definitely appreciated, and as I mentioned, this is not a sexy issue. It's not nearly as heat inducing as dog parks and $53,000, but it's a whole lot more important, a whole lot more important than a whole lot of issues that we deal with here. And it's also a testament to the fact that despite the fact that we may have disagreements on other issues and other things, that we also have the ability to be able to be focused and work on other things at the same time, and ultimately end up, I think, accomplishing something that is fundamentally more important in terms of the stability of this city, so.
I have to agree with you, that dog park issue was a very sexy issue.
Ordinance 87, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Ordinance 87, amends and reenacts sections 22 through 26 of the Comprehensive Building Code, and this is an update to our building code.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Order 87.
Could you repeat that?
Ordinance 87, amends and reenacts section 22 through 26 of the Comprehensive Building Code, and this is basically an update to our building code.
I saw that, it's kinda modernizing it.
All right, continue.
Ordinance 88, is zoning matter C-5214, is an ordinance amending chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, city of Shreveport, by rezoning property located on the northwest corner of Lindwood Avenue and Fulton Street, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from B2 Neighborhood Business District to B3 Community Business District with MPC approval.
It's a good thing the neighbors like it.
All right, let's move on.
Ordinance 89, is zoning matter C-5414, is an ordinance amending chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, by rezoning property located on the northwest corner of Caddo and Common Streets, surrounded by Douglas and View Streets, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R3 Urban Multi-Family Residence District to B4 Central Business District.
Is this for that downtown family dollar that we discussed a few weeks ago?
Oh, that's great. Okay, move on, Dale.
I'm sorry. Let me, sorry. And I guess, you know, who from, and now, who looks at this from a master planning perspective now that Dara's not here?
Well, Stephen Jean, Dara, and a committee of people actually worked on this one because it does have a lot of implications as towards, as to the master plan in downtown. I mean, it would be the first kind of new construction retail in downtown in quite some time, and so a lot of special consideration was given. There were a number of meetings that took place, and a lot of requests were made of the developers. They responded very well to those requests. There was, I think, a very long laundry list. There was really maybe only one that, you know, some of us would have hoped they would have chosen that one, but everything else that was kind of requested, they checked it and incorporated into their design. It's a, it's a very well-designed project, and I think it represents a big improvement over even the product that we've seen. You know, they've come out with a kind of a better product in recent years anyway. I think there was an example of one down on, in South Yuri Drive. But this will be even more suitable for the area than that, you know, so it's, it's a very good final design, and I think it, a lot of work went into it on behalf of the MPC staff to come up with something that is as high quality as this is.
And then, as far as the DDA or, Miss DDA, did she opine on?
Folks in support of the final design. In fact, there were, at the, at the MPC hearing, there were a number of people who came to express support for what is before us today, and those included the representatives from Shreveport Common, from the DDA, from, I want to say maybe the chamber. There were three or four folks that came to say, you know, this is a really, you know, good final plan, so have not heard any opposition to it. There were some concerns of some residents in the area about pedestrian access, and those were addressed in their design, and so, you know, really, I think what we see before us now is a very high-quality plan.
Okay, Dale.
Ordinance 90, I believe we had, Mr. Chairman. Ordinance 90, zoning matter C-5714, is an ordinance amending chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, by rezoning property located on the northwest corner of Quentin Street and Hearn Avenue, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from B1 Buffer Business District to B1E Buffer Business Extended Use District Limited to a snow cone stand only.
Should've got there a little bit earlier this summer, but again.
Okay, Dale.
Ordinance 91, is zoning matter C-5814, is an ordinance amending chapter 106, by rezoning property located on the northeast corner of Edgemont Street and Line Avenue, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R3 Urban Multi-Family Residence District to B1 Buffer Business District.
Yep, okay. I'm a little confused, in the write-up, it says there is no opposition present, and I know there was opposition present.
If you get further down, get down below the map, and it has opposition.
So then, you see what I'm saying, at the top, it says no opposition present?
Yeah.
And Mr. Jenkins, looks like Mr. Clark stepped out of the chamber, so.
There he is.
Oh, there he is.
Behind the post.
He moved on it.
Am I going to? Mr. Jenkins, I was actually out of the city when this was heard, but they, they only approved the rezoning, they did not approve the site plan. So the site plan will have to come back before the MPC board. That time, they will have an opportunity to address some of the concerns and the opposition. Okay, and from what I understand about this issue, I mean, I think that they're working together with the neighborhood, and I just didn't know, I guess we'll find out tomorrow if some of the neighbors are currently dissatisfied. I have not had any thing back from them since the six weeks ago before the witness first came up, so. Well, you know, if they are dissatisfied, we will know that they are dissatisfied. Okay, but you have, I mean, it hasn't been a, there hasn't been a whole lot of discussions between members of the staff, it's kinda between the developer and the neighbors. From my knowledge, there has been no additional discussions, because this is awaiting site plan review, and they're gonna resubmit a site plan that possibly will be more acceptable to the neighbors. Okay, and then, so if we approve this rezoning, and is it approved subject to the site plan, or is it approved to be rezoned, and then the site plan comes back? The site plan will come back next month for approval by the MPC board. And then if it's not approved, does that mean it converts back to? The rezoning will stay in the site plan, it just will not be able to be developed until the site plan is approved.
You got the issue, you better get it with the zoning.
Okay, I mean, you see my question, but once the property, and, but I guess it's only rezoned for a certain period, I mean, if they can never work it out for a year or something, what happens, or it's rezoned from here on? The rezoning will be there, it will be zone B1, it just will not be able to be developed until such time as an acceptable site plan is received, reviewed, and approved by the MPC board. And if for some reason, like they never work out between the existing developer and it's never approved, and then the developer either tries to remarket or sell that property, would it be sold B1, or would it be sold, served as R3? If you approve the rezoning, it will be sold B1.
Another B1 use could come in there.
And the B1 uses that are part of the existing ordinances would be available at what's subject to them providing a site plan that is accepted and approved by the MPC board. Okay, and then I guess my question is, what's the value for us approving this at this point in time? I mean, why wouldn't we just table it until the site plan was available, and then we knew exactly what we were getting ourselves into? And that's a decision you all would have to make. Approving the B1 zoning gives them the ability to move on and develop a site plan with a B2, with a B1 use that, once approved by the MPC board, then they could move forward with their development.
I think the answer might be, they may not be willing to put full effort into it until they're zoning. I mean, that'd be my assumption.
I mean, you see what I'm saying, I mean, we're kinda going out here on this deal, and this is how we sort of find ourselves in trouble later on, is we agree to some and then.
Well, we're just agreeing, would be agreeing with the zoning.
Sure, but, but if you're stuck with the zoning, even if this developer, and this guy's trying to put in a restaurant, which I'm fairly amenable to, assuming they can work it out, but let's say they never work out a site plan that's approval, and then you could end up with a different B1 use.
Yeah.
And I mean, I guess I'm asking, do we?
We always amend it back to the MPC until the site plan's approved.
I mean, it would still go through the same process, Councilman Jenkins, that they would still have to come in, deal with the same issues that site plan review does deal with, traffic circulation, park, parking, impact on the possible other uses around this use. Just, just for an opinion, there, B1 is the lightest commercial zoning classification we have, there would not be anything possibly intrusive brought into that particular area. But what happens, you end up in this use-by-right deal, which I will just tell you, has been something that we have been in a little bit of trouble on in the last three or four years, and that's.
Longer than that.
I mean, I just don't see the reward of going out there and doing this at this moment in time until they've agreed upon a site plan. Now, I'm happy to defer to either one of my legal.
I'd be happy to defer.
I mean, I think you've laid out the problem. We have had support cases, and I would defer to Ms. Scott to talk about those, but as you know, that has been a problem when the zoning is already in place.
And though it's never had that use before.
And the county refuses to approve the site plan. So now what happens when, you know, is there a problem with refusing to approve the zoning until you get the site plan? You know, to me, that's your legislative prerogative. I don't know if Ms. Scott has a different.
Well, is this an appeal? No, 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 it's just up for, but.
Alan, is there a situ, I guess there's a situation, and I think it's what Councilman Oliver Jenkins is saying, and I just want to clarify, is we change the zoning, existing businesses that are there could go away, but then, under the new zoning, some business could come in that would not need a site plan approval.
Anybody needs a site plan.
Okay.
Would require a site plan.
So there's still that option.
I remember once, I believe we were trying to bring a business in District G that was gonna require change in zoning, and we had some concerns about changing that zoning from what it was because it was gonna allow other activities there. I believe we had something in place that if maybe the business did not go forward, the zoning would not go forward. I think it was called, what was that, Project Indy? You all remember that?
I thought it might have been Ron's. Ron had one with an education.
Well, this is a different one, I remember the one that he had also.
His was contingent on, on the business purpose, being approved or something for the amount of people there in a parking lot.
A charter school you're talking about?
Yeah, it was charter school.
I remember that, but this was a different one.
Business and high school and elementary school.
This was a different one, but I think it was contingent upon, it was called Project Indy, it was keeping it kinda secret, it did not go through, and the zoning did not go through.
That was out in West Shreveport, that was.
I know what you're talking about. That was one out of Greenwood Road, was it?
Right, that's the one I'm talking about.
But it was full of out there, wasn't it?
Yeah, about the old outlet model.
About the old outlet model. And that property is still up for consideration, and there's still interest in that property. But barring something, well, let me say this, I mean, barring something that I hear something from either Terry or Julie, I mean, I'm inclined to postpone it or table it until the site plan is at least in front of the MPC. I really don't want to get another one of these deals, well, you used by right two years down the road, and then we're having, and I'm not against whatever they're trying to do, but I just want to make sure we're doing it in concert with whatever, but if somebody hears any, gets any feedback different, I'm happy to, that's the way I'm leaning at this moment.
Okay, we'll be looking to get a motion from you tomorrow.
Alan, there's no problem with them moving forward for site plan approval and the MPC taking action on that if we've not changed the zoning, is there?
The MPC can still approve the site plan, contingent upon the rezoning.
Okay.
Like I said, I wasn't at that hearing, so I don't know exactly what transpired that day.
Okay. I think that protects everybody.
So will that be your motion tomorrow?
That's what you can expect tomorrow, unless I hear otherwise.
Okay, well, I'll be expecting that.
Thank you, sorry to send this down back from when I went through the.
Ordinance 92, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ordinance 92, is zoning matter C-5914, is an ordinance amending chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, by rezoning property located on the east side of Kingston Road at the intersection of Bellevue Road, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R1D Urban One Family Residence District to B3 Community Business District on the western portion, track one, which is Kingston Road frontage, and from R1D Urban One Family Residence District to I1 Light Industry District on the eastern portion, which is track two.
Ron?
I really don't even know what they're putting in here, I haven't, I haven't been able to find out exactly what, what they're trying to do. I know you got light industry all up and down there, it's not gonna appear that it would be a problem, but I don't know what they're trying to put in, I haven't heard it.
And that concludes all the schedule of legislation, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Thompson. I guess he eased out on us, so anybody have anything at the table that they'd like to bring up, get off the table? If not, Dale, I don't guess Mr. Thompson would mind it, but we'll move on. I hate to move on without him, but no ideas, progress has to continue.
I think Ms. Farnell is ready to come forward, Mr. Chairman.
Please, Ms. Farnell.
Do we need to read the? Oh, I got you, sorry. We're down in Clark's report, so.
Property standards appeal?
Yeah, if somebody can tell Mr. Thompson, tell him that Councilman Oliver Jenkins doesn't wanna dismiss it till we get a Clark's report. You know how that is. Okay. Okay. Don, it's a Farnell.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Constable Shine and Council. We have seven cases today. Our first one is in your area, Mr. Shine, 3413 Palm Road. The owner is present. This was a case that we had 60 days. This was a case that we had 60 days ago. The request that we had made during that time has not been completed. One of them was to complete the care premise at the structure, to paint and the house and secure it, and do some seals. He is present. And as far as I'm concerned, I want to proceed with the demolition. He is here and where is he? I would be willing to give him some time, but he has to make a substantial amount of improvement than what he's done this last 60 days, which he has not. So, he's here.
How you doing?
State your name, please.
Herman Pickens, 3812 Seneca Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana. Think I own this property at 3413 Palm Road. Now, when I started this project, you know, I had all intention of going straight through and finish it, but I got in a financial bind. But when I was talking to Ms. Dorothy the last time I was here, I have to blame it on my level of understanding with what she was instructing me to do, and I just didn't do it because I thought I was doing the right thing, you know, by keeping the yard beautified and everything, but I noticed when she showed me some pictures today, I have some, you know, like some wood pile here and a wood pile right there, and so, that's what she wanted me to actually get out of there. Now, it's a decent-looking piece of property, and I've been doing a lot of work with it, but if I can get some more time with it, you know, I could make it a home. But right now, you know, I'm just, just in financial bind, and...
Now, when you said time, you mean three, four years?
No, no, I'm not talking about that. I probably can, can do it in 30 days. I'm not, I'm not looking for a lot of time because, you know, now, I'm getting right with the finances so I can finish the job. The job is not that far from being completed. You know, I have the materials to do the work with, now I just have to put time in.
Ms. Donther, you want to give him 30 more days, or what?
I'll give him 30 more days, but substantial improvement must be done, and that property has to be clean while he's doing what he is doing to those repairs, because right now we've got trash and debris that he hasn't been maintaining, and it does make the whole neighborhood look bad. So, I'd be willing to give him 30 more days, and we will talk afterwards so that we can make sure that we're both on the same page, so that this time he'll complete what he stated that he was going to do before.
Mr. Dickens, do you understand that?
Dickens.
Dickens.
Yeah, but the only thing is, is that I think that the property that I got looked as well as the rest of the properties in the neighborhood, even though I have not, you know, did exactly the thing that she's identifying, the property is substantial with, you know, with the rest of the houses over there.
Mr. Dickens, let me, let me...
I need to do the work.
Let me make it clear to you.
Okay.
That's not a decision for you to make.
I know.
I just, I just want to make it clear.
I'm not making a decision, I'm just, you know, just, just giving you a scenario of what it looked like over there. She had pictures of it.
Let me finish again, Mr. Dickens.
Okay.
Let me restate that again. I'm usually pretty good with communicating the King's language.
Okay.
That is not a decision for you to make. That's not a scenario for you to make.
Okay.
What you need to do is to do what she has instructed you to do. Now, if she has instructed you to do something that you're not able to do, then she's going to come back and say, well, I'm going to follow through with the demolition. So, that's why I'm asking you now, can you do what she's asking you to do? If not, I'm going to ask Ms. Donther to follow through with the demolition. Now, can you do what she's asking you to do? I don't think she's asking you to do anything but maybe clean up and make it look a little better right now. If that's beyond your capacity, if that's beyond your capabilities, let us know, and we'll move on, because you don't live in that neighborhood.
No, I don't, but I'm concerned about...
Let me finish now, let me, let me finish, let me finish now. You don't live in that neighborhood, and there are persons who live in that neighborhood who don't want that kind of junk in the neighborhood, because if you lived in my neighborhood, I would want to give you 30 more days after you've had all this time. You know, I say, "Donther, tuck it down," because that's how we get so many complaints from people who, from citizens who live in those neighborhoods, who pay taxes, try to be good citizens, who have school kids, who, you know, it's, it's a psychological impact on those kids that live in that neighborhood, where it seems like the mayor doesn't care. I'm a city council person, all that, it seems like I don't care, and we come and listen to your scenario, and we have Donther there who's being paid to do this, and then we're going to go along with what you want in order to try to satisfy you. Now, I'm asking you again, if you tell us that, and I don't want no, no, no long scenario, I want you to either say, "Can you do that?" or "You cannot do that." If you cannot do that, Donther, I'm going to make the motion that we go along with the demolition. If you can do something in 30 days, I'm going to make the motion that we give you 30 days. And I, I don't want your opinion on how you think it looks.
I got you.
All right? And then, can you do what she's asking you to do?
Yes.
That's better. All right? The motion by the chairs is given 30 days. It's been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins, that, for second on that. All right? You have 30 days. All right.
Our next case is in Councilman Jeff Efferson's area. This is 118 Egan Street. We have this to come before us, and the owner has not...
Is Ms. Bobby Moore here?
He is here. I'm going to ask him to come up, please.
I'm sorry. Is that Mr. Moore back there?
That's Mr. Moore. He's coming forth right now, sir. He's coming forth.
Dorothy, I haven't noticed a lot having been done here.
It has not, and I'm requesting that we proceed with demolition, sir. This has been one of those situations where owner is trying to redeem the property back. He's not been able to. This has been going on since February. I think I've given him time to try and do that. I don't have, I don't have any time loaning on repairs, and so, he's here to speak, but my, I'm requesting that it be demolished.
All right, Mr. Moore?
How you doing?
State your name.
Name and address.
Zachary Moore, 118 Egan. What I'm trying to do right now is, pretty much is a financial thing, and I'm also trying to get with the company that I'm trying to get to do the work on the house. I've been trying to communicate with them, and we're trying to reach an agreement on what I'm going to pay them to, you know, do the work on the house.
Have you gotten clear title on the property yet?
No, I spoke with him last week, and he's supposed to contact me today, as a matter of fact, because I made him an offer to pretty much get him out the way, but he didn't contact me today.
Yeah, and that's my concern here is, I mean, I, I know that you got this with good intentions to, you know, rehab the property, and I would love to see it rehabbed if possible, but, you know, it is one of those situations where you have somebody who's got an interest in the property that's not being cooperative right now, and so, that's going to be hard for you to be able to get permits, and, you know, I don't know that you're actually going to be able to do the work that you are required to do within the timeframe. So, you know, we talked about that last time, and we, we made this delay so that you would have some time to get permits pulled. I mean, have you been able to, to get to the point that you've pulled any permits?
No.
Yeah, well, and, and I'm sorry, I mean, like I say, I would love to see this, and you still are able to appeal it beyond us, but I think I'm going to have to go with upholding the Property Standards Board's decision on this. You know, best of luck to you. I do hope you figure it out. I just think we, we need to move forward.
Can I get a second on that? It's been moved by Councilman Efferson that we would demolish, seconded by Councilman Mark Moore. Okay, all in favor of this vote? All right. Six oh vote to uphold your decision. Okay, the next one?
The next case is 3815 Cornwell Drive. It is in Councilwoman Rose McCullough's area. Is anyone here?
Please come up.
Is that all in manual? No, that's inspection.
No, no.
What's his name?
This is Mr. Jesse Watson.
Mr. Jesse Watson.
Jesse Watson.
Yes, sir. This is, this is a fire that occurred on March the 4th, 90% fire damage, and we're asking to proceed with demolition.
Mr. Watson, would you like to make a couple of remarks?
Councilman Shine, before you make some remarks, I'd just like for Ms. Farnell to kind of walk us through what's taken place that leads to the demolition.
Well, of course, we had a fire in March, and the, when we sent out the notice to the owners of this property, what happened was the property manager filed appeal, Mr. Gordon Spitner, and at the time, it was presented to the board, the Property Standards Board. They heard the evidence, and they voted to give him 30 days to have it demolished. Since that time, there was a new owner, which is Equity Trust Company. They have filed a 10-day notice as eyesore procedure when a new owner requires a property that already has an order on it, and that's where we are today. He's requesting, he's filing appeal, and that's where we are.
He had a 10-day order to do what now?
He had a 10-day order. He had a 10-day notice that was sent to him, letting him know that...
As the new owner, he's the new owner.
He's the new owner. That letter stated to him, number one, that there was already an order for demolition that had already been attached to this property, that he had 10 days to file an extension to the city council if he wanted one. So, that's where we are today. He's here based on his extension, a request for an extension on the property. That's where we are today.
As the new owner.
As the new owner.
Okay, can we hear from him now?
My name is Jesse Watson. I bought that property with the intent to demolish it and possibly build a new structure, and after looking at it with two contractors, the bidding price is so high, I asked them if I might be able to take that structure, even though it's badly burned, and I've done two or three other houses in the city of Shreveport like that, and try to refurbish what is left standing. And both of the contractors admitted to me that it's going to be a, a great task, but that it could be done. I've rehabbed about 27 houses in Shreveport, some all the way from being worth nothing to being worth over $100,000. And I believe that I can do this one the same way, and if I don't do it, I felt that it would take away from the tax base of the city because I would probably just have a lot instead of a house, based on the cost of the bids.
So, you've been the owner how long?
About 20 days or so, maybe 30.
So, how much time you think you'd need to, to, to work on this eyesore, because that's definitely what it is?
Yes, ma'am. I believe that I can blacken the structure, which means whatever roof damage is done, there is a back wall that the, the person with the Property Standards Board said that was unstable. I plan on taking that wall completely out and putting in a new wall. That's where most of the fire was, and then solidifying the house so that we can repair the inside. The scope of the inside is probably about 90 days worth of work, though. But far as the community is concerned, I stay in neighborhoods like that, so I understand. I can solidify the structure where all should be okay with it within about 30 or 40 days.
Okay, so, I want to move to give him 60 days.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Warren McColl, that we would extend this gentleman 60 days, and seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. All in favor of vote yes opposed to no, you've got 60 days on a 7-0 vote. Best of luck then. Okay.
The next case is going to be 3038 Yorktown Drive. Councilwoman McCullough, this is in your area also. This, too, is a house that we are requesting demolition. This house went before the Property Standards Board.
Ms. Farnell, why don't you let Mr. Moore come, come up, and so they can be closer to hear what you're saying?
Ms. Moore is here, but I think she wants her grandson to come up and speak on this half, and I don't have a problem with that.
That's fine.
Well, both of them, well, both of them can come, yeah.
Because she had said she had a problem on hearings, so...
Yeah, that's right. I wanted, I wanted him to come up close to you.
On, on the property, this property went before the Property Standards Board, July the 15th, wherein the owners was present, and the Property Standards Board gave them 30 days to demolish the structure. Since that time, they have appealed before the city council. Also, we have present with us today, not only the owner of the property, but we have the owners who live directly next door to this property, who's here also to speak on the property, if you would allow them to, Councilman Shine.
I will, after we hear from them.
This is the owner, this is Ms. Moore, her grandson.
Is she going to let her son speak?
My name is Matty B. Moore, 334 Phoenix Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana.
So, she lives on Phoenix Drive? Okay, okay.
I am appealing the Property Standards Board because I was not the owner of the property.
Let me ask you this, you weren't the owner July 15th when you were given the extra 30 days to demolish? You were not the owner?
I can't hear, I have to let him speak for that. I can't hear good enough.
Was she the owner when the 30 days was given July 15th?
Yes, ma'am, she was the owner at that time.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Okay, I was not, I can't see where I was starting from, where I left off from.
What happened, I mean, you didn't proceed with demolition. What is it that you're trying to do, Ms. Moore?
She wants to get addressed that.
Why didn't you proceed with the demolition as ordered by the board?
I'm going to let you do it because I can't hear good. I don't understand.
Why didn't she proceed with the demolition after she was ordered by the board to demolish in 30 days, July the 15th?
Why didn't you demolish the structure when you were ordered to do so?
It was not in my name at that particular time.
I think she's talking about July 15th.
July the 15th.
You have to ask her something.
Ms. Farnell?
I can't hear good. He going to answer those questions.
All right, go ahead on, grandson. Come on up to the mic, grandson. Tell us your name, and you take over.
My name is Vernon Moore, and I'm the grandson of Matty Moore. The reason why she has not proceeded with a demolition at this time is she's still, she just got ownership of it, legal ownership of the property, June the 30th, and she's been attempting to get bids and offers for both rehabilitating the property as well as demolishing the property, and being that she is on fixed income, she's trying to, you know, get, get, get the lowest, you know, possible...
Bid, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Since June? Been trying to get bids since June, since the 1st of July?
Well, she's gotten some bids, but, you know, she's trying to get under the lower.
Is this bid to rehab or bid to demolish? Which, which one are we talking about here?
She has been looking at both or considering both, but most recently, she's been looking Uh, she has been looking at both or considering both, but most recently, she's been looking, basically focusing on demolishing the property.
So that's been a difficult task. So how, how long are you wanting to take to demolish this property? You've been given thirty days, so you're saying you need an additional, how many days? To demolish it?
What is her budget to demolish it? I mean, is there?
Well, she doesn't necessarily have a budget, but ideally she would, I mean, I'll give you a number. She would like to spend as little as possible. Preferably, I would say, if I had to give a number, preferably less than, say, three thousand dollars.
She could find somebody to demolish it for less than two thousand dollars. So let me ask you this, how many days would she need to find? Because I could find somebody to demolish it for two thousand dollars. For three thousand dollars. She has the money? She has the three thousand dollars to get it demolished?
I'm not one hundred percent certain about that.
Oh, okay.
Well, how many days, how many, how many days does she need to do anything with the property?
Um, I mean, I guess we would request anywhere from thirty to sixty days.
Okay, Councilwoman McCullough, you?
I wanna say thirty days because you should be able to find somebody to demolish within thirty days.
Second? Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman McCullough that we would extend her thirty days. It's been seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. All in favor of vote yes, opposed to no?
I think Dorothy has something.
Okay, now, can you explain it to your grandmother?
Yes, ma'am.
Within thirty days, if it's not demolished, then the city is going to demolish it.
Also, would you be able to give us the information of the person you're talking about?
Okay.
All right.
Ms. McCullough, press it again.
You have your thirty days. And Dorothy will give you the rest of the information up close where you can hear.
Councilwoman Shine, we have two people here that were here, two other people that would like to come and speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. You all wanna come up and speak on the, uh?
I got another couple back there that want to come up and speak. Did y'all turn in a card? Okay.
Oh, I've got you.
On the same property?
No, because I'm not a property.
Good evening. Councilman Shine?
Yes.
To the council, to the mayor. Thank you. We have no problem with, uh, oh, my name is John Thomas, this is my wife, Val. We live at thirty forty-two Yorktown Drive, just next door, which is west of the property that is in question. And I have no problem with what just transferred here.
Giving the thirty days?
If they want to give her thirty days, that's fine.
Okay.
I want her rights protected, but I also want mine protected.
Okay, right.
I've been living next to the house for over forty years. And her sister passed about four years ago and no one has been there in about ten years. So it's time to either upgrade it or take it out.
Right, okay.
Okay, because I know, I know where Yorktown is, so.
Yeah, I was just over there Sunday, I saw.
Man, I don't know whether you went over, I don't know when you were a kid growing up, you used to go to that little football, yes.
I used to live in Old Forest, on John Quinn. Born and raised. Outdoor toilet.
Used to come on and pick up kids and carry them to Lenea.
Yeah.
I say, man, glove, outdoor toilet.
You were in Lenea when I was there? Hallelujah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all very much. All right. Okay.
All right, our next case is in Councilwoman McCullough's area, thirty-one forty-five Ashton Street. I would have Mr. Jacobs to come forth, please, Mr. Jacobs. This is a rear structure wherein the owner and I have both agreed that this structure is gonna be demolished within thirty days. He is here.
My name is Kelvin Jacobs, forty-eight twelve San Antonio Drive, Bojita City, Louisiana.
Okay, so you all have agreed on the, that you will demolish it within thirty days?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councilwoman, uh, Jeff, you're close to Councilwoman McCullough, you wanna make the motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we were giving thirty days to demolish.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Corbin.
Corbin. All right, pass with the six oh vote, one, now that'll see, okay. All right, Willie Mays, twenty-nine seventy-five Willie Mays.
Yes, sir. Our next case is before Councilwoman McCullough, twenty-nine seventy-five Willie Mays. This is for inoperable vehicles. This is a case wherein we had cited vehicles to be towed. Our inspector did our first inspection back March the sixth of fourteen. The owner filed an appeal. We had to reschedule it. And so it was rescheduled to April the fifteenth. He was present when we went, it had to be rescheduled, I'm sorry, for July the fifteenth. Mr., the owner of the property was present and the Property Standards Board voted to give him ten days to repair or remove the vehicle. Since that time, he has filed an appeal come before the city council. The car is still there, it is still in disrepair. The car, the tires are still on flat. It's in the same location, so we're requesting that the car be towed. And Mr. Francis is here.
Reverend Francis, would you please come forward?
Reverend Nathaniel Francis, Jr., twenty-nine seventy-five Willie Mays. Uh, the car was stolen. First of all, it was stolen, it was running and it was stolen. The car is now all the way on flat, it's up in the air. The car will start. I gotta get someone to come out now and do it, do whatever needs to be done.
What needs to be done, Nathaniel, come on.
Stair and collar need to be put in place as to where it would go backwards and forward. He just got it where it just crank up. So I got to pay someone to get it where it go backwards and forwards. Then I'm gonna paint it, which I can do just like come out showroom floor. So these people that stole it, I'm gonna really give them something they won't steal now. So I just need thirty days to get it to where it need to be. I'm just selling some property on, on Judson. Here's the paper. And they supposed to be giving my money at least in about fourteen days. So that's, and then it's another car that we supposed to be in two cars. It's another car that I do painting and bodywork. It's a car I invested some money in, it had five thousand miles on it. And I need some time for that car, I'd like to get that done while I'm here. Give me sixty days and I'll have that car fixed and running.
We're looking at two cases, Ms. Farnell.
No, we're not, we're only looking at, uh.
Well, excuse me, Ms. Farnell. The lady came this morning, talking about I had my car towed away. I said, now, I told y'all when I called down, there's supposed to be two cars.
Wait, you got, you have two different violations. One is a property standards violation and then there's a whole nother, you want a business issue out there? You got a lot of issues here.
Let me explain what has occurred. When it was appealed to the Property Standards Board, there were two cars.
And that was when?
That was two, that was July the fifteenth. When this was appealed before the city council, there was only, he only appealed one car. And that's the one that we are here before. So that was correct as far as, we're only here for one vehicle.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And he said he need thirty days to get it running? Is that what you said, Mr. Francis?
Yeah, I got to pay to show up.
Now, I need the council to know that I've had, I've met with Mr. Francis. I've been to his house two or three times with Property Standards. Ms. Farnell, also, we've met with Attorney Scott and Attorney Scott's office in regards to these issues here. So I'm gonna move to give him thirty days. After thirty days, that means that the vehicle would be removed.
It had been moved?
I'm sorry.
Been moved by Councilwoman McCullough that we would give him thirty days? Can we get a second on that?
I second it.
It had been seconded?
Discussion.
Nah, right. Any questions?
No, no. Ms. McCullough, in these conversations, was there any discussion about running a business on his property? Or discussion about parking in the yard?
Um, each time we've discussed the cars, there was a problem. Even when we did the T-bone situation, there were some issues about the cars. I think it was more than one car at that time being parked in the yard. And so since then, we've met with Attorney Scott as to, I guess, what his rights are. And of course, I've been out two, on two other occasions with Stan Harris, Ms. Farnell and some other staff regarding some property standards issues. And of course, it was noted to me at that time that a business was being run at this particular residence. So, um, you know, that is.
It's not a property standards issue, right? That's a permits and that needs to go to MPC, so have they been out there?
Uh, MPC did come out, a young man did come out. What was his name, Stan, the young man that met us out?
James Hurd.
James Hurd. Yeah, and he left his card as a matter of fact. But now, in talking with Mr. Francis, I actually came and had staff to meet me there and he wasn't there. So his explanation to me was, city councilwoman, you didn't call and let me know you were coming. So for that reason, I'm willing to extend him an extra thirty days.
All right.
To get the car up and moving.
I got you, but, I mean, I'm a little interested also about the whole running a business out there because the thing is, if you're running a car repair or refurbishment in your yard, you've got repeated parking violations in your yard, right? That's, that's a SPD issue. You've got permitting, zoning, what have you, running a business issue. And then in this case, we're just dealing with isolated one-time issue. So I am happy to support the rest. I just, Mr. Francis, I'm just gonna tell you that kind of, your plan there is gonna have to change. Otherwise, you're gonna have people from zoning and SPD out there in a different manner than just property standards.
Can I, may I speak?
Yes.
Okay, cause, you know, I want to speak about some, about some more calls. Because what we're doing now, we hitting at and that and swatting the camel about. Because I got pictures now to show how things need to be cleaned up in the community. As to what we saying that we want this cleanliness. And I believe in cleanliness because cleanliness is a part of God. And I'll need to talk about my five cars, my seven or eight cars that were running, that were illegally picked up, that were illegally picked up. Do I need to discuss that now? Do I need to come back later? Do we just need to deal with this one car? These two cars? Cause like I say, this other car, I kept calling back and saying it's supposed to be two cars that, you know, I need this additional time for. So, but I do have an issue that I want to talk about. Seven cars that my mayor told me that he would take care of. And he did, do what he said that he was going to do. And when I, if I was supposed to file a claim, they said that I was too late. I said, this claim don't have nothing about a deadline or time, a time. So I need to get that discussed, I need something done about that.
Let me say this.
Claim?
Since we got thirty days as a motion, let's go ahead on and vote and carry this through and then we'll, since you're up here, we'll give you some time to, all right? Now, you got thirty days for the, for the case that you're here on. Now, we'll hear your, now, we got, it's what, was it seven oh vote?
Yes, sir.
Uh, for thirty days. Okay, Mr. Francis, Reverend Francis, we'll give you some time about the other situation since you're here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shine. And I also want to say this, Mr. Shine, doing what I'm trying to do in life is kind of hard, but I can make it with the help of the Lord and then every once in a while, you get some sunshine. You gave me some sunshine the other day when I was here, some of the words you said about me. Then my son said.
Yeah, you've always been an outstanding citizen.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying and I'm trying. I want to see Shreveport be a good place. As a matter of fact, the whole wide world.
Right.
But especially my hometown, I would be reminiscent. But now, like I said, now my mayor, he told me, but Glover, he told me that he would take care of this issue about my cars. Because they were illegally picked up, they said that when they went out there, a tree had fell on the house. My mother and them was in the motel. They thought the house was abandoned, a park was there. I had tried to call Ms. Williams to, so she could come out, hear the cars run. It had been raining, when you go back, you'll find out that it had been raining. I wanted her to see that these cars was running. So I didn't want to mess about these cars because I want to start a car lot on the Cooper Road. I want to see a co, more businesses on the Cooper Road. I talked to my councilman about that. So I want to start a car lot. And these cars were somewhere, I had to take them away from there, the reason why they was on this property too. I had a business over in the Hollywood area, but they had put me out. So that's the reason why the cars were at the house, but they would run. And I want to show her that they would run because I'd be foolish to buy cars, in which I was buying cars that would not run. They just had to be fixed. And I was going to school, you go, you check the record now, I was going to the Votek School because I want to open a training center through the church and paint bodywork. I got four more months to go to fix hard-hit cars. And some of these cars, I was gonna fix them and go and put them back out on the street because they were good cars for people to have, they would be good to use cars. So when the claim department said, the man told me at the claim department that I was too late. I said, nothing on this paper about a time limit, mister. Wasn't anything, I got the paper right here to show that I, that it wasn't on them about a time limit. Then he told me, they said, that they sent me a second letter. I said, no, nobody sent me no second letter. And my councilman mentioned that this should have been a certified letter if they did send it. But it wasn't sent to me and wasn't no certified letter. If you go check, you're gonna find out, if you go down to the post office, wasn't a certified letter sent to me about I had a, my time limit was gonna be up for them to file that claim. So that's what I'm saying, they owe me for about seven cars. Hard-earned money that I invested in them cars for my future to do things to help me in life and to help my children. So that's, that's something I feel they owe me for.
Let me ask Dale, Dale, is there any way you can check into that and see what the validity of it is? If we, if we, if we owe him, you know, even if I have to come up with a little bit that I don't have? But, you know, whatever we need to do in order to.
I'm sure he'd trade your car for those five on credit that he's got with his man right now, I mean.
We actually have, Mr. Francis has raised the issue, it's been appealed. Lots of us have looked at it. Uh, it's between risk management and what may be appropriate since he's now appealing to the council is to get Ms. Kelly down, perhaps at the next meeting, to present the file and the report of everything. Because this, this isn't the first time we've heard it. Reverend Francis has not changed his position. He's remained very consistent. He simply disagrees with the decision that he's been given. And if the council's gonna consider it, I think getting Ms. Farnell's file and her report on the initial sighting as well as Ms. Kelly's report from the risk management side where he filed the claim would be very helpful to the council in terms of your consideration of this matter.
When can you get Ms. Kelly down?
Whenever you all would like to speak with her, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Reverend Francis, you think you could come down tomorrow?
Yes, yes, I'd come, I'd come tomorrow, yes.
Why don't we see if we get, can get Ms. Kelly down and, and Mr. Simples so we can come up with a solution to this and then just keep you from dragging further out. Okay.
Would you want to do that in a committee format before the meeting? During the meeting may get a little extensive.
Yeah, it would be, it would be nice if we could do that maybe at two o'clock. You think maybe we might get the public safety chairman to, to call a meeting and?
Mr. Chairman, we don't.
Your past time to, your past time to post anything for tomorrow.
Oh, that's right, sure is. Well, could we do it in an informal meeting then, Dale?
Well, we have risk management committee at two.
I think that's the committee that.
Yeah, that's, that's right. That would be, you're right. That would be, that would be the committee in order for him to come down and, and discuss that.
I think it's with council, I mean, with Attorney Scott that we discuss the other cars versus this one car here today.
I think it has been settled with the one car today. You're gonna get thirty days. What we're looking at now is the cars that they picked up that you said that they owe you for.
Yes, sir.
So come down to the risk, uh, Sam.
One more thing with the shine on this, on this other car, so it won't come and tow it off. It's a, that, and you know, we need to do something about that. So we won't be like when they had towed these cars, they, 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 uh, they did, they didn't charge nothing back on my taxes. They, 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 uh, they, uh, did, they didn't charge nothing back on my taxes. They just never did pay me for my car. So to block anything from happening, that's what I need, I need an extension on the other car that I'm talking about.
Uh, Mr. Dodger, well, Dodger, can you handle it for him? In an administrative, uh, in an administrative decision?
Attorney Scott, I see a look of concern on your face, so you need to step on up and-
Yeah.
You put whatever you got that's furrowing your brow on the record.
I mean, we got a lot of violations. Can't have cars on yards.
You can't-
You saw that, huh? Okay. Members of the council, Mr. Sibley's correct. A claim was, Reverend Francis made a claim to risk management. That claim has been investigated, and they've provided a decision to him about the disposition on that claim. In lieu of a meeting, we'll be happy to provide a written report or ask Ms. Kelly if she will provide a written report with any documentation of the claim and the disposition of it to you by tomorrow. And then you can review that and decide if there's a need to have her come down to speak more formally about it. But the client, there's already been a decision on the claim. The claim was denied, and the reasons for that claim will be spelled out in the written information Ms. Kelly can provide.
Could we, uh, I mean, like Dale said, you know, I'd hate to take up a lot of time at the city council meeting if, if she could come down tomorrow and maybe take about five or ten minutes, bring her report down and give it to Reverend Francis tomorrow at the, uh, uh, what is it, the risk and-
Risk manager.
Risk management committee.
That committee will meet upstairs in the finance conference room on the sixth floor at two o'clock.
Well, that's fine.
So if he would like to come up or-
Did you get that, Reverend Francis?
Yes, and also, I'm trying to get a good understanding. I'm, I'm saying, I was with these people, this, this risk management and with Ms. Scott, and I'm totally in disagreement, and that's the reason why I want you all to hear, to see, let you all hear what happened, to see how unfairly I've been mistreated and how I've been lied to also to, not, not only, yes, that's what I want to see.
Well, I tell you, come down tomorrow and, and, and when we have public comments, we'll give you an opportunity to come before the council and let this fine lady and these fine gentlemen here, uh, your situation. You are a taxpayer and citizen here in the city of Streetport, and we want to make sure that we give you due process.
Appreciate that.
Okay, before, before he leaves it, I want to just, just so you know, it is illegal to park a car on the yard, in your yard, right? So if you have cars parked in your yard, they can come out and ticket you. You're aware of that?
Yes, sir.
And you're also aware that to conduct a business out there, you need some type of a permit to do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are you saying you're not in violation of either one of those two things?
I'm saying that I've been mistreated about my, my car, about that, and I'm willing to do whatever's right. And I want, I want us to do what's right also, like we prayed about, about, you know, treating one another fairly. Then I'm also saying that we're hitting that net and swallowing the camel, because I got pictures to show how ugly our community is, the drainage ditches that needs tending to. I got pictures. Then you can come to see for yourself. So you'll see, I'm not lying. There are tree limbs that's hanging over in the street that needs cutting back. So, you know, there are some other issues that I want, I know we can't do everything today, but I just want, you know, 'cause that's the reason I had want to speak before this issue came up, but we said that we would do this, you know, when this came up. That's some of the issues that I had wanted to talk about.
And that's been addressed with property standards as well. I had Mr. Harris to come out, and we've actually looked at the drainage. It was a situation whether or not it was somebody else's property versus city property. And of course, that's been addressed as well. I've been out on two different occasions, and we've actually visited, addressed this situation. And he says yet that, that it hasn't been, been cleared.
Yes, my concern is that, you know, he is breaking the law currently in two ways. As I understand it, I'm not sure he's refuted that, and I want to at least give him the option to discontinue breaking the law in a public forum so that it's clear. It is against the law to park on the grass, and it's against the law to run a business. In this, if that is indeed your front yard that you're running-
I got you, I just fixed a black car for my son. I fixed the car for my son. I fixed it for my son. Is anything illegal about that?
Let me say this.
There isn't, but if you're doing it on your front yard, it's illegal, because if it's sitting on the yard, it's a parking violation.
Sitting on, if it's sitting on my concrete, and I put on a fender or something for him, that's illegal?
I guess that is not legal.
All right.
I think, Mr. Francis, what you want tomorrow is, you're talking about cars that were picked up by the city.
Yes, sir.
And that's what, that's what we will be dealing with.
Yes, sir.
All of the other stuff, we will not deal with that, Mr. Harris, and your councilperson would deal with the ditches and all.
Yes, sir.
You're concerned about either getting your property back or being paid for it.
Yes, sir.
And if there were any violations that you broke, you know, you don't mind. If it's, whatever the fine is, you don't mind paying that fine, but you want your property back.
Yes, sir.
Or you want some kind of restitution or some kind of agreement made so we can put this to bed, we can put this to rest.
That's right, that's exactly what I want.
On your property.
And I know I got one more step, getting an attorney if I had to. I had some different steps, so I've been trying to take the different step, and that's coming before you all, and I've been treated nicely. I've been treated fairly so far.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
And, and if Ms. Kelly got any thing in writing, so we can get that to Mr. Francis, where if he wants to implore an attorney, then he'll have some information. It won't be no hearsay, I say, they say, and all that kind of stuff, that you can present to your attorney saying, "This is what the city did, and this is, this is, these are the facts that they base it on." So let's look at it and see if it's, what's the legality to it.
Yes, sir.
Francis-
The chairman, before you leave this, Dale, clarify, is there another vehicle that needs to be addressed?
Yeah, two things.
Subject to be towed at this point?
Mr. Chairman, we want to be sure, and Ms. Farnell was saying it, and Reverend Francis referred to the second vehicle. I want to be sure it's real straight on the record. What Ms. Farnell has relayed is that second vehicle, he has not filed an appeal on, because that would come to the council. And until he files that appeal, it is subject to be towed. So it's very important that he understand he needs to file, and he can't do it here with her administratively. He needs to file the appeal. The second issue is if he wants the information from Ms. Kelly, we can have it available at the committee meeting tomorrow at two. But I believe he's seen it, he just disagrees with it, but we can make that available to you, Reverend Francis.
Have they picked up that second vehicle yet?
No, sir, not yet.
Well, he might want to go home and move it, uh, this evening or tomorrow one, unless he wants to file an appeal.
I want to file an appeal, that's what I'm gonna do. I tried to, and I called him and told him it's supposed to be two vehicles. He just told me just one. I tried to get all of it where it'd be a good understanding, Mr. Shine, sure did.
Well, he may want to get with the clerk.
And I need to get this understanding. In other words, you all are telling me there's no need to come up to discuss with you all about these seven cars. I need to get that understanding.
I don't think, nobody's really said that. I mean, you have an opportunity to come up and discuss whatever you want to discuss.
Yes, sir, okay, that's right.
And the persons on the council, they have the right to make whatever decisions that they want to make. But you do have the right to come up and, and discuss what you want to discuss. Now, Dale, tell him again about making an appeal for the second car, so he'll understand that.
Has a time run for filing an appeal?
Dorothy?
Yes.
It has.
For the second car?
Yes, when, um, it was ten- He had ten days upon the, when we had the last Property Standards Board meeting. He had ten days to file the appeal to the city council on the cars.
Now, he's, he's being told to file an appeal, but if the time is already run, then my letter would be that, that it's too late to file the appeal.
They have to make an exception essentially.
Unless the council is directing me to accept an appeal to bring to the council, I think it's, you know, he should know that.
And Mr. Shine, I'm also saying, I tried to get all of it done so we could do all at one time. I'd be foolish to come ask for an extension on one, and I know I got two cars, and they told me wasn't another violation when I called down there.
I'm gonna let your council, since it's in her district, I'm gonna let her make that decision. But now in case she doesn't want to give you any more time, Reverend Francis, what I'd do, if I was you, I'd go and get somebody with a racket, what, maybe twenty-five, thirty dollars to, to move that.
And I'm telling my councilman, too, right now, I want to get this understood. I tried to get this done for one time, and they told me wasn't another car, road. So when I come, I would get the extension for both cars.
So Ms. Farnell, he said?
Will Ms. Farnell clarify?
Yeah, yeah.
That is correct. There was only, Mr. Reverend Francis filed his appeal to the city council. In that appeal, there was one vehicle. So when he called the office to find out, they told him correctly. There was only one appeal, one car on that appeal that was filed to the city council, and that's the one that we're hearing today.
So they weren't aware of the second car?
No, no, that was for the appeal. When this, okay, when, when the, when the hearing was held, there were two vehicles that he filed an appeal for. That was at the Property Standards Board level. They gave him ten days. When he filed the appeal with city council, he only filed for one vehicle. So that, and when he called and they asked him about it, they did tell him the truth. There was only one vehicle that was filed to city council.
Wow. But both, both vehicles went before the Property Standards Board?
Both vehicles went, both vehicles went before the Property Standards Board.
Can his appeal, that he have now be amended? Would that present a problem if he amended and added this other vehicle?
I think if you, if you allowed him the appeal on the second vehicle right now, you would basically be suspending the basic rule that it should be filed within ten days. The council has a certain amount of authority to do that, but what you have to be careful about is letting anybody that wants to come in too late go back and file an appeal.
But can, can the one that's already been filed, we have an appeal that was timely filed with this one vehicle. Can it be amended to bring in the second?
I think it's the same issue. It's really just like allowing another appeal. You know, if you find there were extending, extenuating circumstances, council does suspend the rules in, in cases like that sometimes. But you have to be very careful that you don't open up that Pandora's box of every time somebody's laid on appeal, that you're-
Well, based on this situation, I'm gonna ask that we extend it. I mean, we extend the, uh-
Amend it?
Amend it, yeah. Amend the appeal that's already present, because it seems as if though- He wasn't quite informed on what it was that he was expected to do. So for that reason, I'm gonna ask-
I'll second that.
Yeah.
It's just not worth it.
Right, there you go. All right.
But, okay, so that we're clear, he has thirty days for both vehicles right now.
Thirty days for both vehicles?
Thirty days for both. I mean, that's what I'm voting on, and if somebody sees it any different.
Okay, it's passed with a seven oh vote by hand. And Reverend, come back tomorrow, and we'll talk about the vehicles, uh, and, uh, and we'll go from there.
We do, we do have, I'm sorry, go ahead, Art.
Mr. Shine, Dorothy, could you send us the information on the second vehicle, so we'll have a record of it?
Yes, I will do that.
All right, ma'am.
Uh, in reference to Reverend Francis's reference to, I guess, as he termed it, I'm going to, I was going to fix the situation involving his other seven cars. What I indeed did, Mr. Shine and members of the council, was to come back and review the record. And in reviewing the record, there was nothing I could do except agree with the conclusions that had been reached by staff and stand on that. Would not put myself or the city in the position of contradicting that which had been well detailed and well established. I respect and appreciate the fact that Reverend Francis disagrees with that. I understand, it is unfortunate. But it is where I, as the mayor and the administration of the city stands. I think Mr. Francis needs to, or Reverend Francis needs to be clear, and Art, you, and Julie can, can give some insight here as well. If there is some aspect of that that he wishes to pursue, that this council is open to entertaining, then we need to also identify what that process is, so that can be effectively communicated to Mr. Francis, and we can have some understanding in terms of, of what needs to be done from an administration standpoint to address that. The second point of consideration that unfortunately brings on some relevance now, based upon the comments offered by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, is, is that I think that the folks in zoning need to make a note and be aware so that we don't ever end up getting caught in a non-conforming use situation from a zoning standpoint. Because what you have now, and I'm not a lawyer, you're not gonna try and play one on television, but you have at least at this point an awareness of what could be a set of zoning considerations that we need to make sure that the proper folks have some understanding and knowledge of at this point.
All right, now Reverend Francis, you understood what his fix was. With the mayor saying he was gonna fix it, fixing it meant that he was gonna take another look at it. It didn't, fixing it didn't mean that he was gonna, huh?
Like he's failing, he's looking at all.
Well-
He's like, he's unfail by a whole lot of things.
Well, I'm not gonna get into that, and man, I, and I wish you wouldn't get into that right now. If you want to discuss it with him, I-
At the price of sitting in the big chair, Mr. Shine, I understand, respect, and appreciate. Don't have a problem with it.
That's exactly right, all right, uh, yes.
For the record, there were two votes taken, and if it's okay with the council, we would consider the first vote to be on CAB 1400445, which is the case before you. And then the second vote will be on the new one that we don't have a number for.
Thirty days. That would be fine, Mr. Francis.
That's what we're handling.
That would be fine. All right, Ms. Dorothy, let's get with the last one here.
Ms. Shine?
Yes.
I want to be clear to Art and Julie, in the event that there's a path that you want us to pursue with regard to addressing that which has already been resolved regarding the other seven cars, I want you guys to give us some idea in terms of what you would recommend to the council and what you would require of us in terms of how we would actually look to pursue that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just for the record, Mr. Thompson, you taught me well.
We have not, uh, uh, Mr. Thompson, we have not really gotten to that right now. That's why I told Mr. Reverend Francis to come back tomorrow. We only entertain what we voted on, and tomorrow we will entertain, yeah, the seven cars. We didn't want to put too much together.
Maybe, maybe I should say this to clarify a little bit. There really is no procedure for an appeal from the decision of the risk manager to the council. So it's not gonna be a formal appeal where you can take a vote and say, "We overrule the risk manager, and we think, you know, the city ought to pay X amount," or whatever. It's more of, you're just sitting as the council and hearing what the citizen wants to say.
That's exactly what-
And you might suggest to the mayor, maybe you want to look into this, or you don't want to look into this. But you really don't have a, a formal appeal procedure to the council for that.
That's exactly what we're doing. I don't think, we promised Mr. Reverend Francis that we would overrule, or we would look into- We just want him to come down and voice his objections, and if any council members have any comments that they would like to make, well and good. If they don't, sit here and, and be quiet, and if the mayor has something that he wanted, he wanted to say, but we want to extend to him as a citizen in this great city that he could come down and, and voice his opinion, because he is a taxpayer and citizen. Now, whether he's gonna get the results that he want, nobody promised him that.
Councilman Shine?
Yes.
Should we, because one of my colleagues have asked the question, should we be concerned where those cars are at this point?
The old cars?
Yeah, the seven cars.
This matter's really, has a little age on it.
They've been sold?
They've been disposed of.
They've been disposed of?
Yeah. Well, from, one of our colleagues, one of them might be in South Louisiana, in Mexico. He don't know. He don't know. Okay, uh, 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 but let's look at this tomorrow. I mean, we, we've done what we're gonna do on this today, all right?
Yes, sir, Mr. Shine, our final case is, uh, gonna be in Councilman Webb's district. I would ask that, uh, Mr. Michael Roy, this is, uh, a property that, um, needs to be, he has, he is going to rehab the structure. He's asked for sixty days. I have checked his finances. They are in order to actually proceed with the rehab. So I have, uh, no opposition for his sixty days of which he's requesting, and he's here.
Thank you. Uh, this is just, oh, I'm sorry, my name is James McFarry, and I live at twenty-six forty-four Crosswood Lane. And basically, long story short, it used to be my mom's house. And, uh, it was partially destroyed by a fire. And we lost the house, and we've been in a legal battle for like, almost three years. And we finally got it back into my name. And the deed was, uh, uh, title was back into our name on, uh, eight twenty-five for this year. And so we kinda got in on the middle of this after it was already scheduled for demolition. And therefore, you know, we've had no chance to do anything about it. The person who, um, we got the property from, let it sit there and did nothing with it. And so we'd just like the chance to...
Right, I spoke to him on the phone about it, and, uh, being as he just now legally acquired the property and he's been in the process of doing it for quite a while, I, I'm in agreement. And I told him he would come down, I'd see if we couldn't give him the sixty days to get rolling.
Okay, it's been moved to second that we would give him the sixty days. Been, uh, I was seconded by Sam over there, uh, B, did you?
Yes, sir.
All right. Yes, sir, you got your sixty days.
Ms. McCullough?
What, what date will he need to come back, so he'll know what's the sixty?
November tenth.
Okay.
All right, uh...
That's all the cases that I have, Councilman...
Okay, Dorothy, get a fine job. Okay, uh...
Mr. Shine, the other appeal for today is an S O B appeal.
One page, S O B.
Okay, it's a, uh, all right. Let's take care of that, whose district? Uh, Thompson, is that it?
No, the club is in B, I believe.
The club is in B? Okay, is it, is it a nice club? Yeah, so Dale, you know, I might have...
Are they open on Sundays, Joe?
I can't go.
Not what I know.
No, I can't, I, I can't go, Oliver, if it's open, it's open on Sunday, all right?
Good afternoon, it's an S O B appeal for, uh, her card. Um, the applicant's actually not here today, I haven't had contact with her, so, um, if you want me to proceed, I will, or whatever you want me to do.
You wanna put it off until she's...
There's some information I could give you, you'd probably, you'd probably make a decision, um, based on the information.
Yeah, that's it, yeah, well, you know, we don't wanna rule...
The applicant was denied due to, she pled guilty to distribution of marijuana. In fact, she's currently on parole for that, and she's on parole until two thousand fifteen. With any felony, they're not eligible for a card for five years after the release from confinement, which will be five years after two thousand fifteen. So basically in two thousand twenty, she'll be eligible for a card, but not until then. I verified it through the Webster Parish D A. She actually was convicted, I have a copy of the, the ruling, so, um, she does not meet the qualifications.
So I'll move to uphold the decision.
Second.
Move to second.
Sorry, what was the motion?
To uphold the decision of the, um, police.
Okay, is that it?
That's it, thank you, Ms. Jane.
Fine job. All right, um, Thompson, where, where are we?
Shine, I believe, that's everything. All right, great job.
We have a zoning... We have a zoning, we have a zoning appeal that will come up tomorrow. I see, uh, Brother Roy Care is here. Roy, we won't hear it until tomorrow, but since you've sit here for so long, I at least wanna extend you an opportunity to come up and say something if you want to. Since you and I was in a little tug of war about twenty years ago on changing the time chambers would serve on the, you remember that?
I think I do, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, council members, mayor. Uh, about a year ago, uh, we had this case, it's concerning my convenience store that I own. Uh, some gentlemen are about to lease it. They're very successful businessmen. They've applied for, uh, to lease the store. Uh, I wanted to come back before the council and appeal to them again. The last time I was before you, uh, there was some issues about the daycare, whether the daycare was open, uh, whether it was going to be open, and that was questionable. Well, since then, the daycare never opened a day since then. So the people who put in the application before saw a lost site. So after, uh, the gentleman appealed for leasing the operation this time, I got with the owner of the daycare, and I did get a notarized, uh, notarized statement from the daycare owner. Can we, can we, can we show this, Mr. Thompson? Uh, and I, and I have a copy.
Better idea to let all the evidence come in on, on tomorrow with both sides here to discuss it.
I do have, I, I do have, uh, a notarized statement from the owner saying that the daycare, they're not gonna open, they won't be opening there, and they not, they've even changed the location site. So I just wanted to appeal to this...
Bring it back tomorrow and maybe pass it around.
I will, I have a copy, and if, if, well, I have a copy for each of you. I, I just want to ask this council that, uh, last time, I think that was the issue. Uh, the store, uh, has been set in vacant. Uh, we think it would be, uh, revenue for the city's, uh, pockets for doing business. Uh, of course, they're gonna do a gas service station, it's gonna be a convenience store. Uh, and it's, uh, gonna be ran by two guys that already own a business here in the city. And I just wanted to appeal to this council again and say reconsider, and, uh, we'll be here tomorrow to support and give you any other information that you'd like to hear.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Appreciate you coming down.
Mr. Care, I was a little distracted now. I think the issue that I had was regarding the nursery or the daycare. There's not gonna, in my understanding, there's not gonna be a daycare.
That, that's, that's correct, Mrs. McCullough. Uh, the lady who did own the daycare, uh, I got, did get a notarized copy from her and her partner signing, saying that they will not, and have chosen another location, and they are not going to open the daycare. But, but it, Ms. McCullough, it never opened up before. Uh, all this time, a year and so ago when we came before, uh, you know, it was alleged that they, and that was some of the members. Also, I did want the council to know that, uh, I did go out during that time and get a, a petition signed by over eighteen hundred people who live in that area. That's saying that they want the store, they want the beer, they don't mind the store selling beer. Back when we did own the store and have it, we sold beer. We didn't ever have any citations, we never had any write-ups. We ran a clean operation. And we think that the operators of the store that's gonna be leasing and buying it will do the same. But all the constituency that lives back in that area agree that they want the store back open. And I have eighteen hundred, uh, names on the petition. And I'll have that tomorrow.
Roy, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll be looking to see you tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, uh... Uh, Mr. Thompson, uh, I know how Thompson and Oliver Jenkins feel, but we'll ask you to, um, put off the clutch report until tomorrow, and, uh...
In lieu of that, I'd like to say something since he's off the hook.
Okay.
And this is really a question for Dale. How do we take care of the lights on, not on streets, I mean, on, uh, like highways and that type of thing? The streetlights that are burned out on interstates and the like, and off-ramps? Who, who controls that and who puts in for that? And who, who needs to notify, and what is the process to go through? Because I got an email from somebody that...
Yeah, we all got it.
We all got it. And I, I did a little research myself, and I have to really support what he says, that there are too many to even drive and safely annotate.
True on our streets too. I mean, e- even in neighborhood. I mean, when I report outages and I recommend people to the reporting site all the time, the one that, there's an A E P website that...
Yeah, that's very effective.
Works very good, yeah.
But there are so many to report, I mean, there are just so many streetlights out, I mean...
But I think the system of having somebody able to do that directly is one thing, because... But on the ones that are not really, can't really pull over a side of a car...
Yeah, these are interstate type.
Interstate, off-ramps, highways, all those kind, is there somebody that drives through every several months and just, you know, annotates? I mean, who, whose job is that and where does that fall?
I don't think we have anybody driving through checking all the lights. I think most of it is probably on a complaint basis. But what we can do is contact, uh, SWEPCO who works with us on a lot of that, and, uh, we can coordinate through them as well.
Is it different for the interstate system staying as opposed to our city streets?
And can we not tell the...
Can we have that contact number?
Let me, let me double check that, 'cause, uh...
All right. Can we not tell just by energy consumption? I mean, some of these lights have been out for months and months at a ti...
I think the energy consumption is a, just a straight flat V.
Right, I think that's what it is.
Yeah, but somebody somewhere, I, I would imagine, is able to tell what the output at a particular site is, and if there's a block of... Yeah, if there's no output for, but Robert said, no, it doesn't work that way.
That's the way it works.
Right, that's right, that will...
Let me check into it, I can report back to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Please.
Specifically parkways, highways, off-ramps, all that stuff that the person across the street can't just go over there and write down the five number and put it on the website. 'Cause that, when I tell people to do that, that really has a very high rate of success.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you, okay.
Robert, did you have...
For the record, Robert?
Three months.
Did you use the website?
Hold on to you.
Okay, on interstate systems, those light systems are maintained by the city forces. That's the agreement that we have with D O T D for installing the light systems. On most of your street systems, those are maintained by SWEPCO, per agreement between us and SWEPCO.
Yes, and that's basically what I was, at least told in this email. And that's why I assume it must go into public works, but I, I don't... I wanna know what system we use internally to work on that.
The city's traffic engineers crews are the ones that maintain the street lights. That we're responsible for exchanging out.
And I'm gathering there's not a long list of them that are surveying them at night. I'm assuming that most of them work between the hours of eight and five.
As Mr. Care says, we don't have a crew that follow at night to, to check on that.
All right.
Why don't, I'm not sure if anybody in the administration got the email you're referring to. Why don't you forward it to myself and Dale? Uh, and we will follow up, uh, with you all on it tomorrow.
I will be happy to, there's probably a little part of it that...
Need to take out.
Need to take out of it, so that's serious.
Nope, no, no need to editorialize, we, we, we...
No, no, it's not that it's rude, but it's, it's not rude, not unprofessional.
If it's personal or proprietary, we, we won't.
Thank you, Robert.
Cut and paste and send us what you wanna send us.
Robert, make sure you check with Andrew for me.
Okay, any reports from any office?
Andrew.
Offices, boards and committees? If not, we have one person, uh, Mr. Kenneth Penn. Kenneth, is he here, okay?
Good evening. I trust you all had a restful night. I've been having lack of that lately. My name is Kenneth Penn, twenty-eight twenty-two, Frostwood Drive. This is my third time coming here. Second time, I let two meetings pass to try to get some resolve over a noise issue. And, uh, as I said before...
Whose area is this in?
I'm sorry?
Whose area is this in?
Councilman Webb.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I'm not sure why I'm not getting any kind of feedback from this issue. Uh, I submitted a DVD that I had taken from my own home with all the proof in the world of what was going on next door to my home. Now, Monday before last, one week from yesterday, my entire household was awakened abruptly at eleven-thirty at night with a school child that had to go to school and my wife that had to go to work. It didn't sit well with me. When you're sitting in, in your house and you got a Harley-Davidson riding between your house to be parked in a backyard, that's breaking the law. I mean, everything I've ever read here in black and white says, uh, that's not allowed, that, that type of noise. And I'm, my, my yard is getting treated like a traffic issue. Now, when they paved a, a street down between there and put a sign between my property and his, I could accept that, that it'd been a fair way for a street. But we're talking about private property, a yard outside the walls of a nine-year-old girl who's trying to get her education and, and focus at night. And it's gotten to the point where my patience is running out. I don't understand why the law can't be adhered to. Like I said, I, I'm very patient. I deliberately let two council meetings go by before I came back here, just to see if... And I made one call to the officer who finally called me shortly after I left here, two sessions ago. And he asked if, I wanted him to go next, oh, excuse me, next door and talk to the guy. Well, that was tried long before I even came here. And the only thing it did, it stirred up an ant's bed. 'Cause I was getting deliberately, this noise created on a more constant base. And I asked him, I said, okay, I turned the paperwork over to, uh, I mean, the DVD over to the, uh, city attorney, like I was asked to. And I said, until you can go next door and absolutely say, say, "Look, this can't be done." I didn't want anybody to disturb the guy. Well, somebody did kinda talk to him, because I, I noticed, uh, the activity kinda increased. It finally subsided after a while. Because I know one person in that household that does have some decency in themselves, and, and they more likely have some kinda influence over getting this to kinda back, back down. But my problem is, I never was contacted by anybody in all this time. So that's over a month's time since I've been here, and I haven't heard anything, or anything, and I did everything that I was supposed to.
That was Chief Huddleston, I think you spoke with after the meeting, that, that was it, I guess. He's not here today, so...
And he, and, and, and the officer that he put in, in touch with me, uh, when he asked me did he wanna go over and talk, that had been, that, that method had been done before. And like I say, the only thing that did was stir up a wassiness. Okay? But what I don't understand is, is that... But what I don't understand is, is, is why, I'm looking at something that's written in black and white that was taken up into this council as the law of the land, which it, it simply states to me that, uh, no noise by any source over certain decibels. And I submitted the proof that it was exceeding these decibels. Now, no noise control officer or anybody from the city contacted me since the last time I walked out of here. I had to call.
Well, let me ask the chief something. Uh, chief, did, uh, I know you spoke with the gentleman a couple of meetings ago?
Yes.
After the meeting?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, he said no one contacted him since?
C O P folks right back out there to visit with him, visit with, try and catch the neighbor next door. What we're hearing at this point is basically what he has said. The guy drives a motorcycle around there, said he got no place else to park it. Can't find where that's a violation of the law. That's where we are.
Okay.
We've, we've been out there several times.
So basically, there's no ordinance prohibiting him from, him from doing that, is what you're saying?
What I know at this point and what I have read, I have not seen anything.
Is that the noise ordinance that he has said?
But he said it was against the law, what is his...
I, I have the ordinance right here about noise. Uh, she'll read it, she said...
There is a, uh, a, a noise ordinance, but y'all have to catch him in that.
It said, no person, well, no noise control officer ever even contacted me. It, it, I was told that, that the equipment could be left at my home, okay? That's what been happening in, in any other calls. But now, look at all the time that has transpired between now and then, and no one has even contacted... I could, we, we could... I could, we couldn't have had this recorded on team times, especially eleven thirty at night, two, two Tuesdays ago. You know, that's what I'm saying. This is happening, you don't have to sit there, I'm not asking for a squad car. I'm the one sitting here and my family is the one suffering. And I'm sitting here reading the law. I don't understand why this law is not applicable. No person or entity shall cause, allow, or permit operation of any source of sound which creates a sound level that exceeds the decibels in this chart. And I submitted that kind of evidence to the city attorney. I don't understand. That's black and white. Now, if he was riding between your home, your home, your home, I know this would have been stopped. That's the bottom line. Just because I've seen to be this singled out individual, looks like I'm, I'm being, uh, gay. You know, the minor of the such. But I, I understand. That's why a lot of people, you know, that I've been talking to, you know, that, that, and I don't go around spreading what, what's going on with me. I'm talking about people that actually have visited my home. And they know I've come down here. And you wonder why you're losing citizens in the city.
Would he be able to continue to record these and maybe file a civil lawsuit?
That's more of a city attorney type of thing.
Yeah.
Can you provide-
Where's Terry?
That we don't witness.
Yeah, come up, Terry, please.
While, while in the process of doing that, Mr. Webb, and I did have the opportunity, Mr. Penn, uh, to engage with the chief and the police department after your, your last appearance, uh, because in, in listening to you, um, and as you described it, I, I was alarmed and, and had a great deal of concern. Of what they ultimately shared with me and, and I will, will, will see if what, what you will offer in response is different. Uh, because as I heard and listened to you, uh, I was in the mindset that this was something that was very similar to someone who was, say, playing a loud music system. Where they come and turn up the volume and it just goes and goes and goes. Uh, what I ultimately ended up being advised was I think what I heard you just reference was that this was not a set of circumstances where there is prolonged, uh, activity, where there is deliberate activity. It is simply the activity that is attendant to the motorcycle leaving the backyard when he goes to take it out and then returning back to the backyard when he goes to park it. And that there does not end up being a period of time where there is a a constant revving and, and what have you, so that it ultimately ends up becoming, um, a consistent, persistent nuisance. Now, the mere fact that it has to travel from the backyard to the street, from the street to the backyard does present a problem uh, and a concern, but it doesn't necessarily represent the kind of set of circumstances that constitute a violation of the law sufficient enough to end up citing someone for it. So if, if I'm not understanding the situation, um, as it's been related to me by the, by the police department, you know, please give me some additional insight.
Are you aware of the, the, the type of noise and vibration that a Harley-Davidson can cause?
I, 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 I'd hope to have one myself someday.
Okay, okay. No problem. And as I stated before, I don't have any problem with, with anybody. We have five or six neighbors in the neighborhood that own Harley-Davidson. You can hear them start over on the next street and down the street. But my problem is the type of vibration and the disturbance that it does cause when it does come. It shakes the actual walls and it's very annoying. Now, me, you know, granted the fact that I am past fifty, but I'm, here lately, I've had to go on high blood pressure medicine. I've never had to take high blood pressure medicine in my life. And then my wife is sitting there asleep at eleven thirty at night. And all of a sudden she jumps up, child runs into the room. Evidently, that, that, it, it must be such an annoyance that, that when it wakes the whole entire household up. But like I say, when you're on one side of the home and you, you can literally feel the walls shake at least halfway through the house, all the way through, that's just too much.
Sir, is, is the muffling system on, on the motorcycle, is it somehow altered or illegal?
Well, all Harley-Davidsons are. I have, I have a document here by the, by the chairman of the board of Harley-Davidson. All of them are, to one degree or another.
I know that Harley-Davidson has actually, has trademarked a corporation. I'm not quite sure.
They, they have discontinued a certain type of muffler. I forget the, the trade name on it. They've discontinued that. And then they have discontinued doing business with shops that sell, that they know of the aftermarket muffler systems. But shops continue to do that to this day. Now, that's something between the legality of Harley-Davidson and their brand name and such. But I, I, I can show you the, the paperwork. Well, all of them actually are illegal. But don't nobody, because of lobbyists, you know, this is not addressed. You know, unfortunately, I seem to be one lone individual, you know. But this is, this is a great disturbance in my home.
Is it your contention that, that the noise created by your neighbor's motorcycle would be a violation if he were just on the street and-
Oh, no, no. I don't, see, that's what I'm saying. Now, I, 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 I've advocated that from the start. I don't have any problem because like I said, we have five or six in the neighborhood, you know, and all of them are big bikes. All of them are Harley's. You know, they, they start their Harley's and they go on by where they're going, you know. But I don't know anybody that's sitting there having to deal with the vibration and the shaking that I'm having to deal with. Now, the guy has a garage. I understand he has a little old car in there. Now, me, I'm, I'm, I'm an advocate of, of, of the, the adage that, hey, it costs to be the boss. If you want to own something, you know, own it to the point where it doesn't interfere with, with your neighbor. You know, I mean, to the point of, okay, take your old car, put it in storage and put your motorcycle in your garage. You know, as simple as that. If you can't afford to do that, maybe, you know, I mean, that, that'd be the equivalency of me having owning cars that I have to park on the street.
Is the garage adjacent to your house or another neighbor's property as well?
It's close, it's on my side. It's on my side.
And so essentially, if, if it were in the garage, if he was to, to ride the motorcycle into the driveway-
Right, and I will hear, I will hear, but I won't get that vibration. What you're saying, is, I'm saying, it's a combination of vibration and noise. And exceeds whatever, it exceeds every, uh, decibel on this chart. From inside, from what I understand, these readings, uh, if they were taken across the property line, okay, would constitute what's against the law. I took these readings, as I gave the DVD, inside my home. And they exceed in the readings. That's, that's, that's what, that should be some kind of cause concern. They greatly, vastly exceed the readings inside my home. Of what, of what the law says is against the law just across the property line. That should give some kind of idea of what's going on. You know, and, and, and like I say, I, I, I'm very, I've been very patient. I deliberately let two meetings go by. You know, because I don't feel, I don't feel it's right that I have to travel up and down here, you know, and, and, and get no results. But I, I, I can't see that if it was in anybody who had some kind of status quo or position in this city, I know this would have not been going on because, because I'm an average general citizen. I feel like this is the only reason why it's still going on. Matter of fact, I know that's why it's still going on. But whatever you do, it's the least of these, see? That's, that's, that's what I firmly believe in. You know, it, it, it's just-
I appreciate the feedback, Mr. Penn, of Ms. Shaw, councilmember, that that is the follow-up that I know I did after the, the last appearance. I recollect of Mr. Penn being here. Uh, because I, I did in fact have a, a rather direct and specific conversation with both the chief and with deputy chief Huddleston. Uh, and, and, and what they informed and detailed to me is what I just shared. And that is that it's not a, a, a set of circumstances where it's prolonged or an attempted deliberate or revving and what have you. It's simply the traversing from the backyard to the street, from the street to the backyard. And when that does happen, it does cause the problem.
That's where my bedroom's at. And that's exactly the size. My bedroom is right, my bedroom windows are right there.
And if it's an otherwise street legal bike, I'm, I'm not quite sure. That, I guess that's why the lawyer's here and why she makes more money than I do, Mr. Shaw. As Mr. Webb just indicated again, we'll, we'll see if she has some commentary to offer otherwise. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure, Mr. Penn, if there is a solution of, that, that has a, of, if there's a practical solution or a practical remedy because-
That's the reason why the first time he came down, or when he called me, I asked him if he had gone over and spoken to his neighbor. A lot of times just a man to man, not go over there all mad and crazy and came, but just go over there and tell him what the situation. Usually a normal neighbor will, I'm so sorry that's happening, I'll roll my bike out to the street, you know, or when I get to the driveway, I'll kill it and walk it to the backyard.
If you recall, Mr. Webb, when, when we had a discussion about the ball plane.
Yeah.
And, and, and-
Yeah, I remember that and the language and all that.
And, 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 and I gave you kudos for whatever your input was on that because it eventually resolved itself. But I was told by this individual that whatever they do on their property, you know, they can do. That was, that was the attitude.
I don't know what I can do, but I, I, I am personally gonna go over there and talk to him myself and just see.
I, I wish you wouldn't because it's gonna open up a waltzness. It's gonna open up a waltzness.
It's not gonna stop if somebody doesn't do something.
And we've been over there and we've talked to him several times. And each time COP goes out there and talks to him, he has always had the attitude of, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, I'm not doing it intentionally. Is it against the law for me to park my motorcycle in the backyard? No, it's not. I try to get it from the front to the back. I can't get it in my garage. I worry about somebody stealing it or stealing something off of it. I'll try to be more careful.
Yeah.
That's what we get every time we, we talk to him. And, and that's kind of where we are. We, we've done everything we know to do at this point.
And y'all gonna have to make me save my money and go ahead and find another house.
Can we have a city attorney?
Now, I've gotta go buy another-
Yeah, I wanna hear what-
I've gotta go buy another house just to resolve this.
Let's see what Ms. Sky has to say.
Let's believe it won't be in the city limits.
I understand.
I don't care what the city attorney's got to say about it.
It's, 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 it's cruel. Y'all don't understand. Y'all don't have to live it.
I have seen the DVD. I did not hear, however, on the DVD, what Mr. Penn said. Um, it was my intention to try to play it again on, on a computer with a better set of speakers. But I did see him going throughout the house with a decibel meter, but I could not hear the sound on the, uh, computer that I listened to it on.
Now, let me ask this question now. As far as the noise ordinance is concerned, who enforces that? I mean, is there a noise control officer hearing this? Do we actually have someone that does that?
Mr. Jenkins, the ordinance that I recall has to do with oil and gas drilling.
Right.
Um, and-
I can, I've looked at it more recently.
It's a general noise ordinance as well. I'm sorry, Sean.
The way the current noise ordinance is written, the noise control officer, which, which is Mr. Wes Wyche, um, is in charge of, and it's, it was begun for oil and gas purposes, but there's a lot more to it now. And it does cover, like Mr., I'm sorry, I don't remember. Penn is saying, um, it does have like decibel levels that you can't exceed. Um, the police department has the ability to, um, write tickets just based on what's audible at the property line when it's like music and, uh, basically music, I think, um, without getting the decibel meter out. But anything that's based on the decibels has to be done by the noise control officer. And I was just telling Mr. Jenkins, I think the problem is, how do you, you can't have him go sit out there for hours. I mean, I, I think it's sort of an enforcement-
Well, there's a machine too, right.
There's a machine that should record.
And we don't have that in the ordinance. I guess we could look at whether-
But that's hearsay because we can't prove-
You know, because if you're gonna try to prosecute somebody, you know, to do it based on a machine, that kind of gets out of, out of my expertise area.
Let me ask this. If, if it appears to be happening at a certain time, why could we not try to get that officer try to be present around the time that this is occurring? I know the, you know-
It's random, Mr. Jenkins.
I thought you was coming home at a certain time at night. I kept hearing you say somebody eleven thirty or-
Well, this particular night, he came through at that time. It's random, it's random. It really is. But the, the thing, the thing about it, you know, like I say, um, my, my daughter goes to bed at, 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 at eight o'clock. Try to get in there by eight, right? She, 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 she's nine years old. But, and, and I, I'll give him credit for trying to get it back there most, most of the time. Most of the time, but, but, before that time. I'll give him credit for that. Because I'm, I'm, I'm not a mean or spiteful person. But when your house is awakened at eleven thirty at night and your wife jump up saying, what the hell is that? And your daughter runs in the room, awaking from a sleep, a cold dead sleep. And you're telling me that even though it's intermittent, that's okay?
I think anybody saying it's okay, I think you got the first, I think the first thing you gotta try to find out is some proof of a violation, not just based on what we feel. Listen what I'm saying. And I understand what you're going through.
I understand.
You gotta have some proof of a violation. Judge ain't gonna listen much to what I feel about something.
Right, right. So that's why the noise control officer said he could do a study. And, and that's why the equipment is, was written into the ordinance, I'm sure. It said he could do a study. Didn't say anything about oil or gas. It didn't specify for this or that.
Does this ordinance allow just for a machine to monitor without an officer? Or will you need an officer?
I think that would be extremely difficult for us to do in terms of prosecution. Because somebody, we're gonna have to first have the machine, show that it's properly calibrated, and then somebody's gonna have to testify as to the mechanics of the machine, when it was put out, what other ambient noise may have been around. I think that's a problem from a prosecution standpoint. You actually need an officer there, the noise control officer there, to be able to certify the violation when it occurred.
Well, I don't know if this-
Mr. Jenkins, let me suggest this to, to everyone. Perhaps a letter to the neighbors. I know, um, um, deputy chief Huddleston said that they would go back and talk to the neighbor again, and Mr. Penn said he, he didn't really want that. But perhaps a letter, city attorney, stationary, at least informing the neighbor of the fact of the existence of the noise ordinance and possible violations of it and what, uh, any conviction for violation would probably mean up to, you know, up to five, uh, five hundred dollars fine, up to six months in jail. Perhaps that will do something. I don't know if it'll be permanent. I don't even know if it'll help, but if it'll curtail the situation somewhat. I really think that the solution to the problem may lie in Mr. Penn taking civil action against his neighbor. Uh, the city's going to be limited in what we can do simply because there is not going to be a noise officer here or a police officer stationed there twenty-four hours a day to be able to write a violation as it occurs. So civil action against the neighbor is one remedy that can be done in addition to whatever the city has in its arsenal to try to, you know, help Mr. Penn address the issue.
Could we get the city attorney to craft a letter and-
We'll be, yes, we'll do that.
And send it out to see if that would work. And if not, and, you know, like you said, Mr. Penn might have to, uh, go take it from a civil standpoint.
And let me say, the intent of the letter is-
If I have another house, if, if, if y'all can't apply this law to what is being written in black and white, you know, says the guy can't put that much noise across my property line, period. It didn't say how long, whatever, black and white, you know.
One, one last, let me just ask, one, one, one other scenario. Just, just one other scenario. And I don't, I don't know if this is working out. I, I guess it would take the cooperation of the neighbor. If the neighbor do not feel as though his, his Harley-Davidson is causing a problem, why can't it be tested? Why can't a noise control officer go to Mr. Penn's house, go inside Mr. Penn's house, allow that neighbor to go and come in there in a test basis to see? And if it does exceed it, would we not all know? You'd be, you'd either exceeded it or you're not?
That, that's an option, but if the noise control, if the noise control officer is doing it simply as a test to see if it violates the ordinance, uh, without any threat or fear on the neighbor's part of being charged with violating the ordinance, that would be the issue, if he would agree to participate in the test. If the noise control officer goes there, however, to conduct the test with the possibility that the, and asks the neighbor to rev up the Harley, with the possibility that he's going to be charged for the violation.
No, I'm not, I know he's not gonna do that. But what I was thinking was if he, if, maybe if everybody saw that it was a violation, maybe he could make some adjustments to what he's doing, you know, if, if he has any good faith there. If, if everybody saw that, that was case.
For all of that or any of that to occur is going to take some communication between these neighbors. And again, the purpose of the letter that I suggested is not to threaten the neighbor, but simply to inform him of the fact that there is an ordinance. He very well may not be aware of it, even though he's talked to the police department about it. So as a first step, we need to inform him that there is a possibility of a violation. If the neighbors are willing to sit down and talk to each other and, and the neighbor who has the motorcycle knows with the assistance of the noise control officer, and that's assuming we have the requisite equipment to be able to do the test, that it is a violation, maybe that'll have some impact and, and change his behavior in starting up the motorcycle.
Would you do that? I mean, would you, just, just go on at least in the letter?
We'll do that.
I don't see any harm.
I don't see any harm that it would do. To me, it seems like it would do some good. If it doesn't solve the problem, then we have to come back to square one.
And the police department has indicated that they'll be willing to talk to the neighbor, and so possibly a combination of all of that may help resolve the situation or calm it down a little bit. But again, at the end of the day, it's going to be what the parties decide that they will do, both the man who owns the motorcycle and the property owner.
Mr. Chairman, council members.
Yes.
And, and Terry, clarify for me to, to make sure we're, we're all clear. The, the particular, uh, uh, ordinance that Mr. Penn is referencing from a noise standpoint, um, while, while it may lend itself to being applicable in this situation, it was drafted, I believe, council members, and probably I'm assuming the oh-eight, oh-nine timeframe in the, uh.
Haynesville Shell.
Haynesville Shell.
Right.
It, it was intended not to address, that, that's why the, the folks involved are not police officers. Wes Weish is the environmental, uh, services person for the city of Shreveport. And so, this, this, this is intended to address issues related to, uh, gas well drilling and compressing stations and what have you.
Right.
But, but not, uh, in terms of these types of circumstances. The, the, the situation that we're being asked to address here is someone who, uh, is, is transporting, uh, an otherwise legal motorcycle from his front yard to his backyard and back and forth. And, and, and how we practically managed to be able to put ourselves in a position to try and address that is something that, that I, I, we're grasping with here. Um, possible thing for, 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 to be considered is, is there anything legislatively that can be considered that, that gives the city of Shreveport and by extension SPD, or if it's something that needs to expand, Wes's responsibility or whatever, something that gives us a, a, a better set of tools to deal with in terms of addressing this? Because, uh, again, my, my position after your first appearance was, Chief, Deputy Chief, we got to go do something about this because these are the kinds of circumstances that can blow up into a dispute between neighbors that ends up potentially get, becoming deadly. Uh, and, and so, we wanna make sure that we end up not allowing these types of things to blow up because we haven't gone out and proactively tried to address it. What, what ultimately was reported, and I think what you're confirming is that it's not a deliberate attempt to, to, to be provocative or, or to be a, uh, an extended nuisance, it's just simply the, 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 the shock of the sound when he rolls in off the street, through the side of the yard to the backyard, and then again, when he goes back out again.
I, I will say this, Mr. Mayor. Evidently, there is some kind of knowledge on his part of, of what, what kind of disturbance that does cause because, um, I hate, I hate when people do something like that. But when the wife is home, he don't do it. Let's put it like that. And I know why.
When, when his wife is home?
I, and, and that's right. That's correct. That is, that, that's decided. And when, and if he leaves at a certain time and knows he's gonna be back late, he goes in the garage when his wife is home.
Maybe she won't let him ride when he's, when she's.
No, she, 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 she rides with him sometimes. You know, she'll pick you back with him sometimes, you know. But, but that just goes to show that it's, it's, it's a well-known fact that he knows that my bedroom is on that side. He knows there's a little girl right there in that room, and my bedroom is right there. Maybe if my bedroom was on the other side, I could be more tolerant with it, you know? But unfortunately, that's the way the house is set up. But, uh, to that degree, like I said, the, the, the other, the other night, I don't know if he trying to beat the wife home or whatever, you know, and he came on between the house at eleven thirty at night. And that didn't sell, that, that didn't sell well at all, not when, not when your daughter's jumping up, you know, you know, the whole house is up in arms. Yeah. If, if, if I was me thirty years ago, yeah, huh, that, that action that you, that you, you're saying it could allude to, yes, it could very well. But I'm a man past fifty, and, uh, I don't have any desire to see what the inside of your tank here looks like, you know? And it's not, huh, you know, I got too much responsibility as a man, a, a, a father and a husband. You know, and I, I like to keep my freedom. I like to walk outside at night, especially after, after hours. But, you know, it, you know, all being adults, like I say, I, my hope was that, 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 that at least, you know, I, not, not to get the guy all up in arms or anything, but, you know, uh, uh, Councilman Jenkins did allude to something that I, I was thinking that may, may have been the resolve of the matter. Well, a study was done. You know, if you file for a letter, you know, oh, wait a minute, you know, uh, what is this? You know, you know, I'm, I'm not talking about trying to trap the guy, but at least everybody will know. I would, I would rather to do that first. At least put everybody on the same page. Then everybody will know.
Let, let me ask you a question again. Now, you relate to, if he get a letter, now, now, what are you saying? It might make him angry, might make him mad?
Well, um, why, why not just do the study? Or go ask him about doing the study?
Well, why not just do the letter?
Because he's already been approached, at least on more than one occasion, directly by an officer who tried to talk, uh, sensibility into the situation. And I got the reverberation of that through an increased activity.
Well, you know, if you, if you sent him a letter, then he's got something in black and white in case this has to go to court. I mean, let's say, even if you decide to move, somebody else is gonna move in your house.
That's gonna be the problem.
Right. But what I'm saying is, then, we would at least have something on record saying that we, now, when officers go out and talk to him, do they get him to sign saying, we've been out here to talk to you about this? You know, you've got some information about this? If he gets the letter, uh, you know, we will, we, we will have something on record. Now, and I, 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 you know.
But, but he could feel, he could feel that he's not doing anything wrong, though. I'm saying he.
Well, I mean, still, if he doesn't feel, evidently, he doesn't feel like he's doing anything wrong anyway. I mean, whether you send him the letter, whether you not send him the letter. I just think sending the, the letter like, like the city attorney, uh, suggested would be a good measure. But now, I will say this. If, uh, Ms. Scott, if they think it's, it would be no value to it, uh, uh, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't even entertain it. But, but to me, it seems like it would be some value to it. But, uh, you live next door, and if you think it would be no value to it, um, um, I'm gonna agree with you.
Well, like I said, um, Mr. Shine, I know, and, and I respect your opinion of, of the matter, you know? Um, but I don't understand, or I can't battle it, brother. I'm sorry. You have to be careful how you put this. If two or three poor spiders have talked to the man directly, and the first thing he asked was, is there anything illegal about it? Once he got the, the notion from them that their hands couldn't do anything, well, that was his permission to keep going, doing what he doing. And a letter is only a formality of what's already been said, at least on two occasions.
Well, that's true, but you got it in black and white. Now, if, 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 if you come and tell me something, and, and if we before the judge, and the judge has to take my word or yours on whether I've been informed about it, but if, 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 if I have a copy of the letter here where I sent to you, uh, you know, it makes it a little bit different. If you plan to take the route of, of taking him to court. Now, if you don't plan to take the route of taking him to court, you know, let's, you know, we can keep on discussing this until, uh, we all get blue in the face. But to me, it seems like we're not going anywhere.
Okay.
I mean, we need.
And that's what I've been feeling for the last month.
Right. That's what I'm saying. We need to either put something down that we're gonna do, or either we listen to you and we move on.
Well, I, 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 I understand your, 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 your need to, to.
Cause you want this resolved.
Go home, cause I, I, believe me, I, I left, uh.
No, not necessarily go home. I want us to resolve the problem.
I, I understand. Okay. Uh, um, if drafting a letter seems to be the thing that you want to do, uh, you have my blessings in doing so.
Okay.
And to me, if you put the letter down, in the meantime, I'm getting my down paper together, cause I know what's about to happen. Uh, so, so, some, everybody's not, everybody's not, they're not, not to the court type.
Well, now, well, now, do you have a suggestion on how this needs to be resolved?
Well, I, I was hoping that it went the way that he said. That's, that's what I was waiting on, to, to get something from a noise control officer or something, and, and all this time that has transpired, even from the first time that I, that I talked to Mr. Webb about it. And once you do a test, then it's done. There, there's no threat. And, and, I mean, it, 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 black and white, the, the report, the, the meter would be in, in black and white.
Mr. Sibley, uh, now, Mr. Sibley is the CO over there, and the mayor is the, is the mayor. Now, they're the ones that have to, uh, make the final decision on what, uh, not so much myself, uh, Mr. Jenkins, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it over there, Mr. Sibley, because, Mr. Mayor, same thing, this discussion is gonna go on and on and on.
And that's what I don't want.
That's right.
But you, but you understand, some people have a, a St. Louis-type attitude.
That's right.
You have to show them. And, and you can tell them, you can walk them down the line, but if you put something there, and solidly it shows, look, this is putting too much.
He wants a, he wants a, he wants a, a report, um, um, so we're gonna, we're gonna leave this in, in, in your hand. What do you think about it?
First, we, 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 as, as I, as I mentioned in my opening, uh, remarks in, in response to, to, to Mr. Penn, when he first appeared, uh, before the council several months ago, the Chief Shaw and Deputy Chief Huddleson can tell you, we, we, we engaged about this as soon as the meeting was over. And, and their admonition to me was, Mayor, understand, you're concerned, but, but please let us give you the full detailing of what's going on here. I had the impression that what this constituted was similar to, to like a loud music violation. A young man who has the loud, uh, car stereo system, turns it on, and it stays on.
Right.
For some extended period of time. As I said, it's, it's going from, it's an otherwise legal motorcycle going from the backyard to the front yard. Uh, the idea that Councilman.
It's gonna be about five minutes duration, we'd say.
How, how long would you say the duration is, Mr. Penn?
I, I've timed it anywhere, anywhere from, from twelve to fifteen minutes. By the time it warms it up, leaves it, leaves it purring in the backyard, you know, and then eventually brings it to the front yard, then it warms up a bit out there. It's a deal. It's a deal. Now, if it was five, you know, you know what? And that's what kills me, because all the other motorcycles in, 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 in the neighborhood, they'll crank up within five, five minutes, and they're gone. I've timed it. But this was a little bit more, more prolonged than the rest.
A whole lot closer.
And the fact that it's, that, like I say, I, I, I invite you to look at the DVD that I gave. You know, and, and like I say, you, you know, you might not be able to hear it because of the speaker of what, what recorded it. That's why I put the site on it. It shows a vibra, vibrometer. It's an app. I got, I got, I got the app, uh, information from a, an actual engineer, sound engineer that lives in this city. He's a neighbor that lives down the street. I called him. He, he runs a recording studio. Matter of fact, I have a background in that also. That's why I was so concerned about, you know, knowing what, what decibels were, were kicking out. And he told me the app, the app to use. And I put one on the tablet and one on the phone, and put, and, and put them in two different locations.
Well, again, the, 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 the idea that the city attorney is offering is one that I think is a, is a reasonable approach. The idea that Councilman Sam Jenkins and, and you, uh, both have suggested is, is one that, that I think is worth some consideration. I would say this, if you're asking a gentleman to submit himself to a set of circumstances that, that has the ability to make him culpable of something, I don't see how you're going to compel his cooperation.
Well, I'm, I'm not.
But it doesn't hurt to ask. That may be a part of what we can include as a part of the letter that's drafted to him. But if you're telling me that, that, that I'm otherwise, uh, uh, able to go back and forth, my bike is legal, uh, and, and I can go legally from the backyard to the front yard, but now you want me to come and submit myself to a set of circumstances that I could be held somehow culpable or liable, then why, why would he voluntarily put himself in that position? But that, that's a, a question that certainly could be answered.
Yeah, my, my point, my point is, I mean, that's, that's only doable if, in all fairness to the neighbor who's not here and has not come before the council at all, we haven't heard what he has to say at all.
And, and he, he has no reason to be here.
Right.
Well, I understand, man.
That's right.
I understand. But, but my suggestion is only doable if, in good faith, he don't think he's doing anything wrong. If I'm getting a letter, I don't feel like I'm doing anything wrong. A police officer comes and says, man, I don't feel like I'm doing anything wrong, you know? In good faith, if you assured me that your, this noise level is higher than what's allowed, then, you know, that may be something I need to adjust, that may be something I need to, to work out. But if I don't feel like I'm doing anything wrong, that's just his opinion against mine. We don't have anything objective to say that something is out of order. And we have not heard from the other side at all, so that's what I'm saying.
And, and I think that's why the, the city attorney's suggestion of a letter, uh, would, would, would be appropriate, and one, indicating that this is a concern, uh, that has been properly registered to the city council and to the administration. Uh, and we are researching, uh, some way in which to see if there, there's some way in which to address, one possible scenario might be for you to, uh, allow there to be some sort of an assessment that would give, uh, a sound, uh, person, uh, who is in environmental, not in law enforcement, that's why, that's why there may need to be some adjustment in terms of how this is, is addressed. Cause I'm assuming, uh, Wes's issues would be from a civil standpoint as opposed from a criminal standpoint, or criminal as well? Well, then, then, then that's already been addressed, but that may end up opening, uh, an opportunity for us to be able to, to, to go in and effectively address. I know from, in terms of constituting a violation, to not have some sort of a, a piece of equipment that would be able to effectively withstand challenge in court, in terms of being properly calibrated, the whole nine yards, or the, uh, the, the testimony of a sworn police officer who's there to say, here's what I witnessed, here's what I observed, here's where I was and still heard and what have you, then you don't have much of a case. So, that's why starting with the letter, uh, and, and offering a, 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 at least several different suggestions, as well as getting some additional feedback from, uh, from Wes, uh, within environmental, may give us a, a place to start. You know, as, as I mentioned to, to, to Chief and to Deputy Chief Huddleson, when you were last here, what I don't want to see, and I'm glad to hear you make the statement about, uh, your advanced age and, and, and how a couple of decades ago, things might have been a little bit different, but I know even now, things still, uh, even amongst those of us who are getting a little bit more advanced in age, still, things can pop off, as the kids will say.
The kids.
And so, uh, and so, we, we, we don't want any of that to happen. We, we want, folks.
This is why, this is why, Mr. Mayor, I, I thought Terry had a, a good suggestion about doing the letter, but if Mr. Penn think the letter doesn't, won't do no good, then, you know, we wanna do whatever seems to be feasible with him.
We, we don't, we don't need Mr. Penn's permission to write the letter. We can still do that.
I, I understand, but if he thinks it's gonna cost him more problems, you know, I, you know, I, you know, I, I'm on his side. But you understand, though, that, uh, the mayor and the, and the, and the, uh, uh, city attorney doesn't need your permission. I mean, I, you know, you understand that, but we just wanted to give a little, 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 little input into that, so.
But, but, if his neighbor has Ustream, he could be at home watching us right now, so.
Well.
It's not like there's anything that we're doing that, that's not, uh, available for public consumption.
Well, I, I understand that, but I just kinda, I.
I stand by, anything I say here, I can say in my front yard.
Right. I just kinda wanted him to buy into it. But he understands that if he does buy into it, you know, the city attorney, uh, can do whatever you direct her to do. You know, and, and it doesn't have to have his, his attention. But, but Mr. Penn, it, it doesn't seem like, uh, and Chief, you tell me if I'm wrong, I mean, it doesn't seem like we're coming to a resolution right now with what, uh, Mr. Penn can buy into, so, uh.
Well, I, I was hoping that, okay, if, if you draft a letter, that it could be somewhat of a combination of the two, draft a letter and do the study.
Well, now, now, you know, you had to, the, the, you, you, and the, you and the mayor would have to work that out on, on what you all, uh, you know, wanna do, cause I think, I, I, um, like he, he gave his opinion about the study, and I don't know, maybe I, uh, uh, cause I found out, man, you know, uh, uh, a lot of his college courses now, you can take them online, and I'm glad that I don't have to go back to college, but, you know, um, I used to think I could understand pretty good, and it looked like my understanding of what you said, that you might not be so in favor of the study. Now, if I misunderstood you, if you're in favor of the study.
My, my, my question is, is, is getting the neighbor's cooperation with the study.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I, I mean, I take from that is that, hey, you know, I mean, why would the neighbor cooperate with something that, that, that might cause him to, uh, uh, go before judge and say, look, I broke the law? You know, now, uh, if, if you got a neighbor that's willing to do that, then he's willing to cut the noise down in the, in the beginning. So, you know, this is what I'm saying. I mean, I didn't want to think that I misread into what, you know, what your position, and not that I'm not capable of doing it from time to time, but... I would just hope that we would come up with a solution because it doesn't seem like we're gonna come up with a solution that Mr. Penn agrees with. So, we're gonna leave it here, Mr. Penn, and me. Chief, yes?
Yes, sir, if I could. I just want to speak on behalf of this neighbor and the police department. Two months ago, when this came up, we met with our C O P folks, and they're really good at dealing with neighbors in the neighborhood, as most of you know.
That's true.
Trying to find a good middle ground, what can we do? My understanding from visiting with them is that the neighbor seemed to be very accommodating, and they went to great lengths to explain that he has a young person there who studies, and it can be disturbing going in between the houses. He apologized to our folks. "I'm sorry, am I doing anything that's breaking the law? Is it against the law to park in the backyard? No. There's no other route for me to get from the front to the back. If there was, I would take an alternate route if it would help things." So his attitude has been accommodating, according to our folks. Now, up until today, a few minutes ago, when y'all mentioned my name, and two months ago, I thought the problem was resolved. So I'm walking into this blind now saying, "Okay, two months ago, I thought we got it fixed." The neighbor said he would cooperate, he'd try and be aware of the noise the motorcycle causes, and he understands that, and would try to use his time better to get that motorcycle in and out, so it wouldn't be more disturbing to Mr. Penn. Far as we thought that was the end of it till fifteen minutes ago.
Well, I'll tell you what... You think you'd get the neighbor down here?
I'll tell you what. Let's do this. Between now and next session, matter of fact, I'll do what I just did. That's why I was so patient to let two sessions go by. I want to see what kind of schedule this guy runs. If he's accommodating as my good friend, the officer, is saying, getting that bike back there before, you know, in an appropriate time that my child has to go to bed and get up from school in the morning. Because I've been tolerant of what's been going on in between that time. If I get another eleven thirty at night, or something of that nature, that's arousing my household, making us jump up like the night before Christmas, I'm not gonna be able to deal with it. Then I'll be back. I'll let two council meetings go by. And if at that time, we'll try to let...
Well...
And that, to me, that's being beyond fair. Because in other words, I'm allowing for this to still vibrate my home in the meantime, as long as it does, it's done, in a manner where we're not, we're not asleep at night. And actually, my wife has a job where she works a split shift, and it does disturb her in the daytime. But maybe we can accommodate putting her on the air mattress on the other side of the house so he can have recreation rather than her occupation. I'll even try that. So I'm willing to kind of go to the limits that I have to. But in the meantime, I assure you, I'm getting my mortgage together.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. Okay, I believe this is, Chief, thank you, and thank you. I believe this is the end of this meeting. Yeah. Did you? All right, did you hear that? Mike gave me a thank you.